Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
It's one o'clock. This meeting's been called and posted in the manner required by law. We have a quorum present today. We have a lot of work ahead of us today. Mayor sends his regrets for not being here. He's feeling, not feeling well today, but nonetheless, we'll get started. First item on our agenda today is related to love, power, and like. Counsel, this is a discussion that we haven't had in quite some time, maybe since 2018, about opt-in and the polar, the provider of last resort as we continue our process to, after connecting to ERCOT and the possibility of moving to retail competition. So with that, I'll turn it over, I guess, to Mr. McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Councilors.
Good afternoon.
Let's see if I can get this program going here. Is it supposed to show on the screen? Are y'all seeing it on y'all's terminals?
No, the light isn't.
James is working on it.
I got it.
Okay, there it is.
It's bear with me, Matt. You've got some controls here on this.
Okay. Well, we are, we're going to talk to you today, and thank you for the opportunity to tell you where we're at with joining the retail market, what the steps that we've taken to date. And we'll have a team presentation today. We've got a team of folks working on this program, and so we will be bringing several different people up. Matt Rose will come up first and talk about the background, how we, how we arrived at this point. And then Joe Jimenez, our finance department, will talk about the financial implications of retail choice. Luke Miller, our engineering manager, will talk about our TND capital assets that are supporting the move of the remaining load to ERCOT and why that's important. Jamie Wood is going to talk about the customer service system changes that will be necessary to support choice. And then Jenny will talk about some of the, we'll talk about the resolution. We've got a draft resolution prepared that y'all, that should be in your packet, and talk about some implications of that resolution. And then I will talk, I will be the cleanup hitter, and we'll talk about the pros and cons of this decision that's facing the governing bodies, the benefits, the, this, you know, the cons, I guess, of opt-in from the city's perspective, from LPNL's perspective, and from the customer's perspective. And then we will, the whole goal here is to get y'all thinking about it and get y'all to where you can ask, ask questions, can deliberate among yourselves, because this is, this is an important decision facing both the board and the city council. And so we want y'all to have as much information as you can to make an informed decision. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Rose.
So as David talked about, we're going to walk through several pieces today. I'm going to start off with kind of the history of how we got to today. For, for some of you on council, you've been dealing with us on this for a number of years. So you're our, you're familiar with us going down to Austin and the processes we took just simply to get into ERCOT. But for the sake of the public and for anyone else, we wanted to walk through a little bit of a history. I've got several slides here, but I'll try to move through them as quickly as possible out of respect for y'all's time. So in September of 2015, LPNL announced our desire to move to ERCOT. And at that point in time, our announcement kicked off nearly a three-year project to gain approval by the Public Utility Commission of Texas for our migration. At the time, LPNL was not a member of the Southwest Power Pool, which is an important distinction at that time and as we moved through this process, or any other regional transmission organization, RTO. And at that time, with the looming expiration of our 15-year contract and the proximity to the ERCOT lines that had been built up to that point, it was the ideal time to seek integration to ERCOT. So 70% of our distribution system transferred over on Memorial Day of 2021. And currently, we have it slated that the remaining 30% will move over May of 2023, pending approval by the PUC and other items that need to take place. And Luke Miller will talk a little bit about some of those things in terms of just the projects to get this done. So what is ERCOT? By now, we've had the discussion quite a bit. You're probably familiar, but they are a nonprofit organization that ensures reliability of electric service for approximately 90% of Texas. ERCOT, Texas is the only state that has a self-contained electrical grid, being ERCOT, previously. And really, right now, we have a foot in both camps, but our previous home, the Southwest Power Pool, as you can see, goes from basically Lubbock all the way up to Canada, involves several different states. So at the time that we made the decision to seek integration to ERCOT, the board and with assistance of the council came up with five goals to guide this process to ensure that we were doing what's right for our customers. And those involved providing predictable and stable pricing for customers, enhancing flexibility and diversification of our energy supply, limiting the addition, issuance of additional debt. As you remember, building those transmission lines came with a dedicated revenue stream from ERCOT as opposed to building that large power plant that our ratepayers would have had to pay off solely. We wanted to maximize LPNL's existing generation access, but number five, we wanted to achieve a simplified regulatory environment. And I highlight that because within that, we stated at the time that it provides us access and unites us with the state of Texas with market participants and power plants, but it also opens the door to retail competition, which is an option in ERCOT, not an option in the Southwest Power Pool. So for the history of competition in Lubbock, as we all know, we had a version of competition for many, many decades, albeit an inefficient one. We had kind of a point A, point B. You could choose one provider or the other. Both providers built facilities down each side of the aisle, and it was just as simple as switching from one to the other. In 2010, the city of Lubbock purchased SPS, Southwest Public Service, or XL Energy, purchased their assets. And at that point in time, Lubbock became truly a municipally-owned utility that we are the sole provider for those that are within our certificate area in Lubbock, similar to how South Plains Electric Cooperative is the sole provider for those within their territory, moving out Southwest Lubbock into the county. And through this process, you know, we had heard from many, many customers that retail competition is something that they would like for us to return to at some point in time. So the history of deregulation in Texas is that Senate Bill 7 passed in 99 deregulated a portion of the ERCOT market served by investor-owned utilities. Currently, there are 72 municipally-owned utilities like Lubbock. San Antonio's the largest, Austin's second. We're the third-largest municipally-owned utility. There's also 75 member-owned cooperatives like South Plains Electric Cooperative that serve some of our system, or some of our citizens. And Senate Bill 7 exempted municipally-owned utilities and cooperatives from being deregulated and being opted into the competitive market in 1999 and really going into effect in 2002, 2003. SP 7 stated that public power utilities could voluntarily choose to deregulate and join the retail market with an irrevocable vote of their governing bodies. And to date, none of the 72 municipally-owned utilities, none of the cities that own utilities like Lubbock have made that move. And really, none of the 75 cooperatives have made that move either. There was one cooperative in South Texas that did make a move, contingent on a sale. It's kind of a unique situation. But nobody to this point has stood up and said, "We're going to voluntarily deregulate and take our customers to the competitive market." So should the EUB and the council decide to do that, Lubbock would be the first to voluntarily make that move. Senate Bill 7 forced the investor-owned utilities at that time, say like a TXU, to unbundle, meaning which, meaning they separated out those utilities into three distinct parts: generation of power plants, transmission, which is the power lines, and the retail customers themselves. And currently, LPNL operates on three of these services, as most municipal utilities do. So the market fluctuates in terms of how many retail electric providers are in any given region that's been deregulated and open to competition. But before every legislative session, the PUC issues a scope of competition report. So before this last legislative session, they issued the 29th Scope of Competition Report, which showed that there were 116 retail electric providers that operate in ERCOT, 315 total unique products, and 77 of the products were solely supported from renewable resources. Again, those numbers have changed over the last, you know, two years, but this is the last official report from the PUC. So in 2018, the board and the council signed a resolution of intent for us to move forward in studying this so when the point in time came where we could make that decision, that we would have the information necessary to do so. So we began shortly after that, after that resolution and after the PUC granted our approval for the first migration of customers in March of 2018 to study this. So the study is now complete, and it includes a full assessment of every necessary step in order to engage in the retail competitive market, which includes closely studying how the two systems under LPNL would be affected. Because again, you had the old SPS system and you have the LPNL system. Those two are not combined, but we're in the process of combining those and moving customers over. But at the time, the study was looking at what would it look like if it was a 70/30 split in the competitive market, but also looked at what we would need to do to our business in general to get ready to make this move. During the course of studying the impacts of opting in, it was clear to staff that the only reasonable way to make this transition is to do it at a point in time when 100% of our customers are in ERCOT, both from just a clarity of communication in terms of just, you know, the only reasonable and responsible way to do this. I mean, how do you explain when you've got somebody that lives next door to somebody and you're on the SPS lines versus the LPNL lines? How on earth do you explain to them that your neighbor gets competition, but you don't? And then how do you somehow try to even that out so it's fair between the two in terms of the prices that they receive, one they can shop in, one they can't? Similarly, you could be in a home and move to a house that is on the SPS wires. Again, there's, there was a lot of confusion, so the only fair and equitable way to do this was to do it when all customers over the line. And just to remind you, the, the target goal for that is May of 2023, to get the remaining 30% over into the ERCOT market. And what I will finish on is that we also know through studying this that we need to study it carefully, we need to examine all options, because the vote that the governing bodies will take is irrevocable. And so you are taking an entity that's been in existence for 100 years and deregulating it and changing fundamentally the way folks receive their power here in Lubbock. And so that needs to be carefully examined to make sure we look at all of the different impacts. But when that time comes, should you take that vote, that we can appropriately educate customers on how they go forward with choosing their provider. So this will be a several-step process. Our presentation to y'all will be the first, although we presented it to the EUB last month. We'll do so again tomorrow. But we'll continue to have these public discussions until we're at a point where it makes sense to take that vote. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Joey Jimenez, who will walk through the fiscal impacts of opting into competition.
Rose, don't run off. Don't just wave.
You back up, Matt.
Do we have a hearing date with the PUC on the, the other 30%? Do we have that date set?
No. We're currently, we're currently finishing up the studies that are required by ERCOT, and then we'll pursue that process. We've been working with folks in Austin, both at the PUC and ERCOT, so they're well aware that we are bringing this, but we have not yet filed it. We're not quite ready for it.
In 2010, when the city of Lubbock purchased what was then, I guess, Southwestern Public Service?
Yes, ma'am.
How was that decision made?
I was not in the room at the time.
Okay.
But I do know that an announcement was made after the parties had negotiated it. And then at that point, I believe there was a public education campaign on what it would mean for customers.
There was not a voter decision on that?
Not that I'm aware of. Certainly not, certainly not as, similar to how we're looking to run this process today.
Out of that sale, there were some contracts that were negotiated. Would that be accurate?
Yes, ma'am.
And one of those, until recently, we were still obligated.
Yes, ma'am.
And what was the length of that contract?
It ran through 2043.
And how had that worked out for the city of Lubbock in terms of cost?
Well, this past, oh, I guess it was this past spring, if I remember correctly. We went through a series of negotiations with SPS in order, in order to terminate that contract. Over the long term, the customers in Lubbock would have paid more out of that contract over the life of it than, than purchasing an early exit to it. There was an upfront cost, which I believe was 77, 76 million dollars, but the life of this contract would have been, you know, well north of about $500 million. So it was a long-term contract, but the most important thing is that as long as that contract was in place, it kept us in the Southwest Power Pool. It did not allow us to fully integrate into ERCOT and pursue competition and other options. Even if not pursuing competition, just the wholesale ability to buy power for our customers would not have been, would not have been feasible.
On the third goal that you had listed, it was issuance of additional debt.
Yes, ma'am.
And in order to integrate into ERCOT, we did have to incur additional debt.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? However, in return, the, the city receives, or LPNL receives what we call transmission costs. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And are those substantial?
They are, and they, and they fully cover our cost of debt. So that's why we feel comfortable that we can go to the customers and say this was a, ultimately a debt-free solution, and that as we begin paying these debt service payments, they will be covered by this revenue stream that comes from the ERCOT market, comes from really every ratepayer in the state of Texas, because that's the way that they fund transmission line construction, is that the entity that builds it incurs the debt, but then every ratepayer pays basically for those highways to be constructed versus building a power plant, which our estimates were $350 to $700 million to build a power plant if we had stayed in Southwest Power Pool. And that would have been paid solely by our ratepayers in terms of raising our base rates over a period of time.
I know that you weren't here in 2012 and 13, 14 time period, but out of that, my recollection was that our citizens were asking for competition. Is that what you recall?
It is, and I actually got here in May of 2013. So I got to enjoy that really fun summer of 2013.
Okay.
Where I think the eventual outcome was a petition to the governor that was signed by, by a large number of folks to bring competition back to Lubbock.
And that's basically where we're headed, is that correct? If we join?
Should the governing bodies decide? Yes, ma'am. That's, that is at least, that is at least the way that we were given direction. So our budgets and our business model, all the research we've done has been geared towards that eventuality.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Ms. Joy. Counsel, we've got several speakers to hear from, from LPNL. I tell you what, let's go ahead and get Mr. Jimenez up, and then if you don't mind, let's hold our questions till the end of our presenters. Thanks.
Good afternoon, counsel. So to give you a little bit of background about our opt-in budget implications, as Matt just mentioned, you know, our current financial model has us exiting the purchase power business in the summer of 2023. As you recall, the prior years, we've always provided y'all two models, we, the non-opt-in model and the retail choice model. And this year, given the direction of the governing bodies, we only presented the retail choice model this year. But not to say we do have the opt-in model still, so if, if anything, you know, changes course, we definitely have the models prepared to go back and, and update those as well and as a non-entity. But again, the biggest, the major driver of us opting in is the significant risk reduction to the utility. As you know, our purchase power costs are the most risk part of our organization, you know, especially given the way natural gas prices have been trending lately and purchase power costs, you know, that, that's a big driver on there. Our fiscal year 2021 power costs are estimated at $196.3 million, and these costs were reduced all the way down to $47.6 million for the year 2324, once we exit the purchase power business. The only remaining cost would be our ERCOT transmission fees and our Elk City contract cost fees that we have. And as Ms., Ms. Joy asked Matt, you know, we do receive a transmission cost of service revenue that's estimated of north of $40 million a year we'll receive for our T-cost revenue. So that is something that we did incur debt for the overhaul of the transmission system and the creation of it, but we are getting a, a revenue stream for that to help offset the debt on that as well. And again, the, we have reduced operating costs in our generation, in our production cost centers. Right now, our current production costs are about $11.3 million a year, and those will go down to $866,000 annually. And that's just kind of to keep maintenance on the plants if we decide, decide to take them into ERCOT. That's still a decision that hasn't been made. We still need some more financial data to determine whether it's worth taking our plants into the ERCOT market or not, given the revenues we, that, given the revenues that will offset the cost of that. So that's still something to be deliberated as well. And again, like I said, opting in provides a higher quality of revenue streams. It eliminates the, the risk of our large purchase power cost, which is, you know, like I said, the most risk part of our business. And it also provides a more stable franchise fee and pilot transfer. Of course, you know, right now, our FFE and pilot are 5% of our revenues, and revenues can fluctuate depending on the price of, of purchased power. Of course, you remember when natural gas was 79 cents a dollar, it was really cheap. So the transfer to the city was very minimal because our purchase power costs were very minimal as well. But given this, you know, it will change from a 5% revenue to a percent KWH. So it's going to be based on consumption and not price of energy. So consumption stays pretty steady, you know, there's not much deviation within 5% year-over-year, you know, the average consumption year-over-year grows about 1.2%. So that, that's a fairly stable revenue stream. So we'll be able to provide a percent KWH based on consumption instead of the price of energy on that. Another thing is our policy reserve levels. Currently, we are three months of policy level reserves, and with, given the choice of opting in, we will move that to four months of policy reserves, just because we eliminated the big risk of our organization, so we need to have less reserves on hand for that. This will also, our general reserves are right now estimated $69.4 million. After 20, after fiscal year 23, or 2223, they will go up down to $43.8 million, given the purchase power cost. The, the drawdown of these reserves will also allow us to cash fund a lot of capital projects. So for the next couple of years, we'll be able to cash fund capital projects instead of issuing debt when we see that. And one of the big things I did want to mention is, you know, right now, currently, our credit rating, which is provided by the credit rating agencies, it's dependent on, you know, we've given them the direction that we're exiting the purchase power business, you know. And so, you know, given that we're in ERCOT, you know, that was kind of a ding automatically, but them knowing that we're moving, exiting out the purchase power business, it's kind of alleviate their concerns of the risk we're taking on. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, and that, that's a big key when issuing debt in the future, you know. Based on our rating, you know, lower ratings means higher debt issuance, you know, and lower, and higher rating, lower debt issuance. So I just wanted to point that out, that it has been discussed to the credit agencies and, you know, to publicly document our budget. So looking forward, you know, we have budgeted going into the retail market. And those are the only two slides I have for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, counsel. I'll be giving you an update on our capital distribution projects that we're working through to accommodate moving the, this 30% of load. It's about 148 megawatts that will be moving from SPP to ERCOT. Essentially, how we're going to do that is offload nine of the substations that are still in SPP and pick up that load on 12 of our substations that are already in ERCOT that we moved over Memorial Day weekend. In order to do that, we're going to have to do upgrades at five of our substations. We're going to have to add capacity at five of the substations. And then in addition to that, we'll have feeder projects where we will essentially tie the feeders that were connected to the SPP substations to the LPNL or the ERCOT substations where we're doing the, the upgrades. So those distribution feeder projects, those entail several different things: acquiring easements, new line builds, some of them will be rebuilding existing lines, adding, you know, larger conductor, reconductors. We'll be able to use a lot of the switching that we have in place, but we'll also have to add some new switching. And then, of course, as we, you know, as we're doing all this work, we're looking at how it affects our overall system and taking it as an opportunity to, to go ahead and balance the system and make sure that we're making changes that are going to provide a more reliable system as we move forward. So the, the SPP system, or the old XL system, is really two systems. It's 15 KV distribution system and a 23 KV distribution system. And so that's what this map shows. It's the 15 KV circuits. Currently, that's at four of those substations that are still in SPP. We're going to split that load amongst seven of the substations that are already in ERCOT. We're not going to have to add any additional capacity to the, to those 15 KV substations. We're going to essentially accommodate this with these feeder projects, tying those lines into, into the existing 15 KV capacity that we have. It's about 40 megawatts of load, and this map shows kind of exactly how we're moving that load. It's pretty detailed, so I won't go through it, I won't go through all of it, but you can see, like on the southern portion, Allen Substation, you can see how we're moving, splitting that load that's served from Allen Substation amongst four substations that are already in ERCOT. The, the 23 KV system that we'll be moving over is a little bit more entailed, has a lot more work involved, and essentially, that's because the 23 KV distribution system doesn't exist on our substations that are, that we've already moved to, to ERCOT. LPNL has not had, the LPNL system has not had 23 KV as a distribution voltage. So what we're doing there is there's six 23 KV SPP subs. We're going to split that amongst five of the substations that are already in ERCOT. And what that means is adding five new 50MVA transformers at those substations to accommodate this. It's a, it's quite a bit more load. It's about 108 megawatts worth of load, and you can see on this map where, kind of how we're splitting that load and which substations we're moving to. The, the five substations that are getting the, the upgrade are Yellow House, Co-op, Thompson, Vicksburg, and McDonald. As I mentioned, the 23 KV hasn't, voltage hasn't traditionally existed, or hasn't existed on the traditional LPNL system. This is a, a map of what it will look like once we get it transferred in 2023. You can see that it almost forms an outer loop there between Yellow House, Co-op, Thompson, McDonald, and then you can see that Vicksburg is kind of in the middle. It kind of holds a lot of those connection points that allows us to provide reliability on those feeders in, when switching's needed to, to accommodate any work or outages that might occur. This is a, a schedule of what we're looking at. It's pretty detailed, but on the right, if you, you can see the, the green line is currently where we're at. So Co-op and Thompson, we're nearing the, the end of those engineering periods, and we, we've started the procurement phase. So we're, we're ordering the material and, and getting everything, starting to see some of the, I guess, potential barriers in, in our schedule. We've built some pretty good cushion into the schedule, but with the supply chain issues that I'm sure you're aware of, we're, we're getting some really long lead times, and we're, we're good right now, but we're definitely keeping an eye on it and making adjustments as needed to make sure we can hit our, our timelines. As you can see, they're towards the bottom, Northeast and, and Yellow House are also projects, distribution projects that we're working on. They aren't critical to converting over in 2023, but they're projects, necessary projects that we're running in tandem with this effort. This is a schedule for our feeder projects. You can see that we've currently completed two of the 11 feeder projects, and we're moving through the remaining portion. Those will end up before the May 2023 cutover date. And this, the slide shows where we end up in the project. There's a few projects that aren't critical to cutting our load over, and so they will run past that May of 2023 date. Those are just some things that we'll have to tie in at the end, and they're not critical to the cut. to the cutover. I did want to briefly touch on the criticality of our Vicksburg substation. It's very important to us from a transmission aspect. It's part, part of our one fifteen KV and our sixty-nine KV loops. But it's especially important for our distribution system and the projects that we're working on to move this load over to ERCOT. It's got both fifteen KV and twenty-three KV, which is a little bit unique. It serves the fifteen KV, it serves load that we have not been able to offload to adjacent substation, substations without incurring voltage issues in the area and being unable to handle that load. So it's really important from a fifteen KV standpoint, but also twenty-three KV. We studied ways to not have to add the twenty-three KV at Vicksburg in order to bring on this SPP load, and we couldn't find a solution. There was not a solution to moving over the, the vic, the thirty percent of load without adding the twenty-three capability at Vicksburg. And then, as you saw on the, on the previous map that I showed, it, it provides a lot of reliability to this twenty-three KV distribution system with tie points to all of the other substations that will be, that will have twenty-three KV. So that's all I have.
Before you, would you, for the benefit of the public, would you introduce yourself and tell everybody what your title is?
Sure. So I'm Luke Miller. I'm Engineering Manager for LPNL.
Thanks, Mr. Miller.
Good afternoon, everybody. My, I'm Jamie Wood. I'm Customer Service Manager for LPNL, City of Lubbock Utilities. And I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the technology side of things and how this is expected to impact the Customer Service Department. As you can see, this is our current utility billing system. It's really just a high-level diagram to show you where we're at. And this is what we're looking at moving forward. Really, the, the key addition to our utility billing system will be the MTM, or the Market Transaction Manager. It is the cornerstone of retail technology. We will be splitting the data, isolating the electric services from all the other City of Lubbock Utility Services. And you can see that on the left-hand side of the diagram, that'll be all electric. As part of this project, it'll require duplication of interfaces and configuration on the electric side. We'll be working with integrations such as the AMI head-end system, which provides us with meter communication, mobile workforce management system, which is the fieldwork piece of it, GIS for any new construction, and the EDI Gateway. The EDI Gateway is the Electronic Data Interchange. It provides secure communication platform that manages all the electronic transactions between Lubbock, ERCOT, and the retailers. From an organizational standpoint, currently, the City of Lubbock Utility supports approximately two hundred thousand electric and water meters, as well as sewer, solid waste, and stormwater services. So the water, sewer, solid waste, and stormwater services will continue to be supported, as they are today, by the utility staff. And then electric services, of which the new market staff will be responsible, will be supporting the additional processes required upon entry into the competitive market. So in the chart, we've shown the creation of the new market group that will provide, that will be providing specialized training and a skill set focused on all aspects of the retail market operation. The remaining staff will continue to provide customer service for all the other utility services. So currently, we've got a hundred and thirty-two employees total in our Customer Service Department. Looks like we're going to need approximately twenty additional FTEs specific to opt-in, bringing us to a total of a hundred and fifty-two employees in the Customer Service Department. Then lastly, I've got a high-level timeline of what we expect to happen. Just some, some high points. Quarter one of next year, project initiation. Quarter two of 2022, we want to focus on employee education. Quarter four of 2022, we'll begin the customer education piece. Quarter three of 2023, we expect to finalize the ERCOT flight testing. And then quarter four of 2023, we expect to have LPNL's, LPNL customers active in retail competition.
Thanks, Ms. Wood. Good afternoon, Jenny.
Good afternoon, Council. Jenny Smith, General Counsel with LPNL. And I'm going to talk to you today about the draft resolution that was included in your packet. It started page fourteen of your packet for reference. But first, as a global issue, just to point this out, under Pura Chapter Forty, a decision to participate in customer choice by the adoption of a resolution is irrevocable. Once that resolution would be passed by the governing bodies of LPNL, it cannot be altered, modified, amended in any way. So obviously, it's a, it's a very big decision and one that cannot be changed once made. There are many operational and mechanical steps, as you've been hearing about, that would need to be completed before choice could be implemented. So because of those outstanding efforts that still need to be done, the draft resolution before you does include various conditions that would be, need to be met before choice could actually be initiated in the City of Lubbock. And of course, today, the draft before you is for discussion purposes. It's labeled draft. We certainly invite any and all feedback on it. So what I'm going to do is walk through the conditions that you'll see in the draft resolution. Number one is that LPNL's total load has been fully integrated into ERCOT for a minimum period of sixty days. So this would allow the transitions to occur kind of in a stair-step method in that the rest of the load would get into ERCOT first, and then after that, then the transition to customer choice. This second item is that ERCOT and/or the PUC or any other regulatory body has approved initiation of customer choice. Right now, that is a purely local decision under Pura Chapter Forty, reserved for the governing bodies of the utility. But this is in here just in case, there's a lot of ongoing work at the PUC, and so we wanted to go and include this just in case that were to become a condition in the future. The third item is the Electric Utility Board and the City Council of the City of Lubbock have established the procedures and criteria, if desired, for selecting the provider of last resort, also known as the P O L E R. You'll see that acronym, acronym a lot, for customers within LPNL's certificated area as of the date of the initiation of customer choice. And then have ultimately designated LPNL or another entity that will serve as the P O L E R pursuant to Pura Chapter Forty. Under Pura Chapter Forty, the governing bodies get to set the criteria and the procedures for establishing the P O L E R. And then upon the initiation of choice, the P O L E R needs to be in place. Condition four, four and five kind of go together. Those are the topics that Ms. Wood was talking about, but I'll go and read those to you as well. LPNL has the necessary software in place, which bills the retail electric providers and manages customer and meter-related transactions, fully operational and testing completed, so that these, the technology is both in place and all the necessary testing has been done. Number five, LPNL has its EDI Gateway, which consists of a communication channel with ERCOT and all of the required parties, fully operational, and all necessary testing completed. Number six, LPNL has completed its distribution system cutover. This is what you've heard Mr. Miller talk about today, such that everything is disconnected from the SPS legacy system and then connected with LPNL's current distribution system and in ERCOT. Number seven is the Electric Utility Board and the City Council of the City of Lubbock have determined that there are and will continue to be a sufficient number of retail electric providers, including a sufficient number of independent, unaffiliated retail electric providers within the ERCOT market that are willing and able to provide service in Lubbock to adequately provide competitive customer choice for LPNL's certificated area. This one is in here in particular because of all the ongoing market redesign efforts that are occurring at the PUC. Unfortunately, with the crystal ball, I don't know what that's going to look like in a year or so, and so this gives the opportunity for both governing bodies to assess what the competitive market looks like at that time and determine if there's still sufficient competition among retail electric providers, such that the citizens of Lubbock would have, would truly have competitive customer choice. Number eight, LPNL has executed any and all necessary contracts with reps. Those are the retail electric providers who intend to serve LPNL's certificated service area. There is a tariff that I'll get to as well, but there may be a need to go and have contracts in place with these reps as well. Number nine, LPNL has made any necessary filings with the PUC regarding its generation function to the extent required. There are certain circumstances at this point under Pura, it's a local decision as far as keeping the utility bundled or unbundled, and sort of depending on what the structure might look like, there may be some filings that are required, so we wanted to include this just in case that were to become necessary. Number ten, to the extent desired by the governing bodies, the EUB has recommended and the City of Council of the City of Lubbock has approved an ordinance requiring the registration of reps that are serving the City of Lubbock. Under Pura, there's an opportunity to require the reps get registered with the city and pay a fee in order to operate in the city. Number eleven refers to the tariff, and this is what I've mentioned before. Essentially, the tariff would be completed, approved, and filed with the PUC no later than ninety days before the implementation of customer choice, which is required under Pura. And this, there is a pro forma tariff under the rules promulgated by the PUC. And so really, what, what the approval here is really for the rates and those types of things. A lot of the terms and conditions of the tariff are already pro forma under the rules of the PUC. Number twelve, LPNL has taken all steps necessary to continue the metering function for its customers in its certificated area, and such metering function would not be competitive. This item assumes that LPNL will continue the metering function through the technology that Ms. Wood just talked about. LPNL, under Pura, LPNL has the option to continue providing that function. Number thirteen allows the conditions to be waived by this body and the Electric Utility Board should any of the conditions outlined in the resolution no longer be legally required for the adoption of customer choice. And then number fourteen is basically a requirement to pass another resolution in the future, both setting the date for the actual initiation of customer choice, providing that date certain on when that would occur, and then also identifying that all the conditions outlined in the resolution have been satisfied. And with that, I will turn it back to Mr. McCullough.
Thanks, Ms. Smith. Was this presentation emailed to Council prior? If we could get it sent out, that would be helpful. Mr. McCullough?
Yeah, we'll get that to you. So you've heard a lot already. I'm sure you're drinking from a fire hose by now. I wanted to kind of transition and talk about the pros and cons. So we'll start with from LPNL's perspective, and you've already heard, you've already heard Mr. Jimenez talk about these, you know, reducing the risk profile, excess cash reserves, funding could be used to fund capital projects. Focus would be on reliability and system improvement. That would be our, that would be our mission. Rating agencies would look at this as a positive change and would potentially reduce our borrowing, borrowing costs going forward. So from the con side, the risks of organizational change, you know, we'd be making some pretty, pretty dramatic changes to LPNL, business process changes, significant investment in technology to support retail choice. We're talking about over ten million dollars to, to make these changes. We'd be the first MOU to opt-in, so there's not a, there's not a well-defined path for us to follow. There hasn't been any, any step along the way, has there? From the City of Lubbock's perspective, the perception is that this would enhance even economic development. I know we've had many calls from potential large users of electricity that have talked about coming to Lubbock, and they have looked at, they have viewed the, joining the retail market as a very positive, positive thing, so I think it would enhance economic development, preserves transfer, transfer revenues, and even could, could stabilize them, give you a more predictable revenue stream for the transfers from LPNL. You could select electric provider that would provide the best rate for combined services of the, of the City of Lubbock, so you might, you might be able to save some money in your budget from that. On the downside, the City Council members will not be able to directly intervene for constituents when they have electric, electric rate and service issues, so you wouldn't have as many opportunities to help your constituents. Streetlight services, you know, that's carried in LPNL's budget right now, so we'd have to, there have to be some consideration about how that would be carried going forward. From the customer perspective, it restores choice in Lubbock after, after eleven years without it. Have many competitive options, as Mr. Rose talked about. Large consumers in particular, I think they anticipate very significant benefits. Many of them have already talked to brokers and folks that are active in the retail market, and I think they expect to see significant benefits. There are some options available in the retail market that we don't currently offer that would be available to our, our customers, net metering and other innovative rate options. And there would be some renewable energy options. For example, if a customer wanted to be a hundred percent green, they, there's options available where they could do that in, in the retail market. The downsides, customers have, have, have to make a choice. I mean, the obligation would be on them to choose and choose wisely. Customer credit issues might limit their available choices, so credit is a key factor in determining who, who would offer service. And then local government advocacy would be somewhat limited. Okay, the regulatory process, Ms. Joy asked a question about this earlier. We, we have had studies performed by EPNA. They, they have concluded those studies. We've had an initial round of discussions with ERCOT. We've got another call that we're trying to schedule, a follow-up call with ERCOT, so that, that part is well along. Once we've got ERCOT sign off that, yes, we can bring this load, and, and there's not significant new investment necessary to do that, which we don't believe there is, then we will file the application at the Public Utility Commission. And we expect the PUC process on this, on this effort to be much simpler, more streamlined than, than what we went through in the initial integration docket. So here's kind of a rough schedule for the overall program. Of course, May thirty-first was our ERCOT integration. That's kind of a milestone. We'll have to carry the NOE power supply until such time as we get switched over. We've got, got that targeted for October first of 2023, when that would go away. We have to get ERCOT approval on, on the studies, which is well underway. Have to get PUC approval to transfer the remaining load into ERCOT. Hopefully, we can get that by August of next year. That's, that's what I'm targeting. Capital projects are underway already, as Mr. Miller and, and Ms. Wood have mentioned, so we're, we're well on our way there. And then the target date on this schedule is October first of 2023 to opt-in. And I wanted to provide just a snapshot of where, where things stand today. I feel like Midland is probably the, the most closest city to Lubbock in terms of where the retail market currently, currently serves, both geographically and, you know, number of customers, kind of structure. So right now, they have forty-three retail electric providers that, that offer about a hundred and fifty different plans. The rates in that area right now vary from about ten cents kilowatt hour all the way up to eighteen cents kilowatt hour. And so there are some, some attractive options out there right now. They're not as attractive as they were two years ago when we were looking at this before natural gas prices started, started rising, but there's still some advantages to where our current rates are. We're kind of in, in the middle of this chart here somewhere is where LPNL's current rates are, so there'd be some opportunities for, for customers to save money on the rates. With that, we will defer to the Council on questions, comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McCullough. Council, this is our first big download of this in a few years. EUB's already heard it once.
Right.
And we'll have opportunity to discuss this more tomorrow at EUB. There's some opportunity that's posted in Exec, but as you ask your questions, please keep in mind that we're making a decision that there's no going back on, on this. And so this is your time to ask your questions, and then if, as you contemplate this, if there's any questions or concerns for city staff, if you communicate those to Jared so he can work with LPNL as we continue to move through this process. Whoops, with that, Mr. Chitas.
Thank you, Mayor Proten.
Reliability keeps coming up. Brings back recall from February. I was down in South Texas when that happened, moving without electricity for almost 10 days off and on. What has taken place to assure or ensure the public that this has been worked on? The plants have been winterized? What, what, what's, what's transpired since February to today? What's in place?
Really, really good question, Councilman Chaddis. There's been a flurry of activity in Austin around the state. Every generator in the state was required to provide weatherization certification to the Public Utility Commission. Those were due December 1st of this year. Inspections have already begun to verify what's in those reports, so inspectors, inspections will be complete by the end of December to, to either verify that they, yes, they did weatherize, weatherize their plants, winterize their plants, or no, they didn't. I mean, so it's not, there's not one of these trust me things, they're actually going out and checking the plants. So, and, and on the transmission distribution side, there was a certification required of all the transmission distribution utilities that the substations themselves were winterized and protected from extreme cold weather that we saw in February of this year. So, that's, that's one aspect is the weatherization, major, major effort there from everybody in the state, including us. On the other thing, the, the, the PUC has been working very diligently and aggressively on changes to the market that would incentivize new generation to come into the market, new dispatchable generation. One of, one of the concerns that, that has been expressed is that, well, we have all of this renewable energy in the grid, and we see all the wind turbines around in the Lubbock area here, but that's, you can't count on that because the wind's not always going to be blowing on them, and there's quite a bit of the wind that was not there in February of this year. So, how do we ensure that in, in a worst-case scenario, like we saw in February, there's enough dispatchable generation to, to serve the load? And so, there's, there's efforts underway. They haven't concluded that yet, but they're pretty far along in their market redesign efforts. We've submitted comments on two different occasions. I was in Austin, actually testified at one of their hearings, and so, so we're involved in that. There's a good effort underway to make changes to the market that, that will help incentivize dispatchable generation to, to be constructed in, in ERCOT.
One more. Customer education.
Yes, sir.
Daunting. How do you begin? What, what, what's in place right now?
Well, Matt Rose has begun the work on an education plan. I think if you saw what Matt did in May of this year when we had the ERCOT cutover, that was a major customer education effort, and I thought he, everybody seemed to think he did a really good job. I certainly do as well. Customers were informed, they, they knew what was going to happen, when it was going to happen, and so we're going to follow that model forward in educating customers about the retail market. It's going to be a, an exhaustive effort, as I think his org used. I think it's going to require a team approach. He's already incorporating some help, got some folks coming in to help him. We know we have Han, the communications specialist firm that will help develop some materials, but we're going to need to have community, community meetings, workshops, web, webpage information. Matt, is there anything else you'd like, like to say on that? Is that good?
Hopefully, the neighborhood associations will be part of that discussion.
We'll, we'll certainly, I, I know the, the council has been good about having meetings with your constituents in your areas, and we will be, I think that would be a good approach for this. I think we need some face-to-face meetings with citizens as we start rolling this out. So, I think you can see, see some of that happening in 2020, early 2022, maybe mid-2022 when we start doing the public education campaign. That's assuming that the governing bodies decide to go this direction, which...
Thank you.
Still pending.
I conclude my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you. Mr. McCullough, I'm, Mr. Chaddis kind of was, you know, went down the road that I was heading because I wanted there to be some type of assurances for the citizens of Lubbock, Texas as to what to expect, and kind of give them some ease from some of their fears that they may have after seeing what happened throughout the state of Texas. I too am very concerned about our citizens' ability to understand totally what is happening. Today would have been a really good day to kind of bring that, that thing down to, so that folks could understand. I would imagine that there are a lot of terms that have been kind of put out there today are really foreign to some folks, and, and a few of them to myself, and I, I, I normally hang around you guys. So, I think that we start now by being clear, concise, and really simple in explaining what happens. I don't think we wait till we start having meetings and gatherings and things like that, because we won't get everybody at those meetings and gatherings. So, I think that we begin now in having all of those conversations in... Oh, yeah, yeah. Having those conversations so that people can pick it up, and, and as conversations happen either here at this dais or wherever, that people begin to be familiar with the language that is a part of this process. What can citizens expect to see begin to change and be different for them as we move in, if that's what we do, moving this, further into this direction? What will look different for them? What will they see? What will they, they notice?
Well, it won't be any different. The technical side of it won't be any different. I mean, it's really, the, the bill will come from somebody different. The electricity will still be the same as it is now. We'll still be providing the, the wire service, so their reliability will be dependent on how good a job we're doing locally. But they'll be getting their bill from the provider of theirs, of their choice. They'll be getting the rate package, the options in that rate that, that they have selected based on the resources that are available. There's a power-to choose website where you can, if you want to put Midland zip code in there and look at what's available now, you can see all the different options that are available. Shorter term, longer term, various combinations of renewables, or just whatever's cheapest, and so customers will have the ability to choose from a lot of different options. So, that's, I think that's the main point of all this. Customers will have choice. Right now, they don't have choice. They're, we're their provider. They will have choice, but there will be an obligation on them to do some homework and do some research and pick the provider that's best for them.
And, and I have family that live in the Dallas-Fort Worth area, so I've seen that, that list, that huge group of providers that they have the opportunity to choose from. So, I'm a little familiar with it, so it won't be as difficult for me. But there'll be some folks that it's going to be totally foreign to. There'll be some folks who won't make those meetings. Okay, let's put it like this. I'm Ms. Mary, and I didn't make the meetings. The information you provided was totally over my head, and it's time to do the big switcheroo, and I have no idea what to do, and I don't do it. What happens to me?
We're, we're going to have folks that will help Ms. Mary. We're going to have a team of CSRs that will be trained for specialized service that will help customers navigate the choice environment.
And if someone doesn't want to choose? Let's talk about that.
If they don't choose, they will go to the polar, and right now, that is probably not the best option available to them, so I would encourage everyone to choose.
Why not? Why is it not?
Well, typically, the, the polar is, it's kind of a provider of last resort, which means that anybody that hasn't done their homework, hasn't, hasn't made a choice, falls to the polar. Well, the rates are not going to be as attractive on that polar. They're going to be higher, generally higher in nature and without all the bells and whistles. So, it's, it's incumbent upon everybody to do their homework and, and choose a provider that's, that's better than just the, the last resort option.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that. I guess my, my main concern is that we get as much information to folks as we can, and when we have conversations, we have them clear enough so people can get it, even no matter when or where they're listening. I guess it's my biggest concern, because we have folks out there who are part of the aging population, who may not have anyone else, may not have that family member that is there to assist them and care for them, so not to hog, hog the mic or anything like that, but those are concerns, and those are concerns that sometimes can go by the wayside and that we don't think of sometimes. So, I appreciate you, man. I, I'm waiting for this thing to happen, and I'm waiting for it to happen as we talk about it clearly and in a simple form. Thank you.
I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. We'll go to Mr. Christian and then Ms. Joy.
Thank you, sir. Following up on that, I think, it seems to me that the biggest challenge will be the transition for Lubbock citizens that the reality is, we won't have a hometown electrician, electrical power company anymore, especially when you look at Midland with 43 retail companies and 150 different plans. They're not going to be able, you know, citizens aren't going to be able to call, we chuckled a little bit about that a minute ago, they're not going to be able to call one of us up and say, hey, can you help me with my LPNL bill?
Right.
That's, that's gone. So, I agree with Ms. Patterson-Harris that I think that's one of the most important first things that they, folks need to know, that when they choose a provider and they choose a plan, it's going to be up to them. They're going to have to contact that provider if there's, if there's a problem with it. It's not long, it's no longer across the street to try to get some help with their, with their bill. And I think that's going to be a huge, huge leap for this community because of the way LPNL's been set up for so many years as they, the hometown provider. It's, it's not going to be that way, and a lot of people are going to have a hard time with that, I believe. So, that's kind of what, as far as public education, I think that's one of the first and most important things that, it's going to be somebody in some other part of Texas probably that they're going to have to call up when they have a billing issue. But the next question is, what about a service issue? Maybe if, for whatever reason, they lost power, for, how is that going to be handled on the local level when somebody, not necessarily disconnected because of non-payment, but some sort of problem with connectivity and electricity? And, and I'll turn off and, and listen.
Yes, sir. Good, good questions. We, we will still manage, manage the reliability of the system. We'll, you know, the AMI meters, they report into our outage management system directly, so often we don't even need to hear from customers when everything's working like it should. We know what, we know what's out and when it's out, and we can dispatch crews immediately to that area, so, so that part won't change. We'll still be responsible for outage calls. If a customer wants to call about streetlights being out, we're, we're still going to be managing that, you know? So, that part won't change. We'll still have a face in Lubbock, we'll just be the wires company, similar to the way Encore provides service now, but everybody knows about Encore, they're the, but they're the wires provider. They don't, you don't get a bill from Encore, that's, that comes from somebody else, so that's kind of what, the way we see this progressing. Was there another piece to your question that I missed? Okay.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Christian. Ms. Joy?
Mr. McCullough, one thing I think we could do starting today is stop using acronyms. They don't mean anything to your average customer, or your above-average customer. I heard reps, I heard PURA, I heard NOE, all of those things, and we need to, we need to just spell it out. The, the, this is what it is. Just don't use those acronyms, and that's not because people are stupid, it's just they don't know.
Right.
Because they don't deal with this every day. So, that would be my suggestion. Let's, let's just say no acronyms, and let's talk it the way it's supposed to be done. When you were asked about what provisions have been made to prohibit something like we had in February, I think first of all, we have to recognize that ERCOT's a creation of the state of Texas, correct?
Yes.
And they are, they are over ERCOT. They have, have the ability to hire fire and do whatever they need to do. But one of the requests that I understand was made was that the companies have to identify their critical providers. In other words, those installations that absolutely have to have electricity and gas. Is that one of the provisions that the PUC has implemented, or was that part of the Senate bill?
It's a good question. I know that we got notices from a lot of customers, including the City of Lubbock. We got notices from city facilities that were critical, and we, and, and it's from the, the water, the water, what's the, Cramois. Hate to use, sorry to use the acronym, I can't think of their name. Canadian River Municipal Water Agency.
There you go. We can't talk without them, can we?
So, we've, we've heard from a few locally, and I think that's the only two that we've heard of. I know there's been a major effort, and I forgot to mention this earlier, there's been a major effort to identify critical natural gas facilities as well and map those out, and those facilities are supposed to report to their local distribution company that, hey, we don't need to be interrupted if we get into a rotating outage situation, because that'll only make, make things worse, and so been a major effort underway there as well. And the Railroad Commission recently came out with some rules that required critical natural gas facilities to winterize and weatherize their critical facilities. This would be compressor stations, processing plants, major production facilities. So, there's an effort underway from Railroad Commission. I think the Public Utility Commission was a little bit ahead of them, but they, they finally got there, and so there, everybody seems to be pulling together, and then there's, there's some coordination groups as well. I forget what the name of the organization is, but between the Public Utility Commission, the Texas Emergency Management Group, whatever their... TETM? And then, Ms. Joy, I think you sit on a committee too that advises ERCOT.
I do.
And so, I think there's, there's been a major effort to communicate amongst all the different agencies that have a piece to play in reliability of the Texas grid, and so a lot, a lot of good things have happened.
And I agree with that. However, I think the concern has been that, that those methods of winterizing may not occur this winter. I mean, we're in December. Fortunately, we've had a war in December, but some concern that there wasn't a mandate to do that this winter, but I think we can all safely say that by the winter of 2022, those will be, should be mandated, and I think there's some penalties that go along with your failure to do so.
You're talking about natural gas facilities?
Yes, natural gas, yeah. Do we have all of our electric AMI in place and working?
We have, no. We have, there are certain meters that have not been converted to AMI yet. There are certain water meters that haven't been converted to AMI yet, so they're not, it's not 100% complete.
Okay, and, and I knew that, that there were some water meters that have not. On the electric side, what percentage would you say that we have completed?
Jamie? It's very, very small, and it's mainly large commercial specialty meters that, that are going to take a little work, so we're going to have them, have them do those a few at a time.
Well, it would appear to me that that's an integral part of what has to happen.
Sure.
We've got to have it done, and we need to have it done on the water side as well.
Right.
You talked about net metering, and a lot of our citizens have installed the solar panels, and we get that request, okay, I'm producing all this, but I don't get any credit for it. So, talk a little bit about net metering.
Well, net metering is a program that allows customers that have solar systems to produce more energy than they use and, and sell it back for, for something, or some, get some banking program, or some credit on their bill, or some value, real-time market value, or whatever, whatever the case may be for the energy that we, they produced. We allow customers to bank it within a month, but if they overproduce in any given month, we do not credit them for that, for that over, overproduction. And that is, we've heard that at the electric utility as well. The problem is, creating one of those programs is, requires some complex programming, some work, and we felt like being, and, and there's other things that fall in that same category that, that we have held off on implementing because we knew we were going to, you know, moving towards competition. So, if, in the event the board and the, and the council decide not to opt into retail choice... choice, then we'll, we'll look at some of those programs and implement them locally as well.
But all of your providers are going to have the ability to do net metering? Is that kind of what you're telling us?
I would say maybe not all of them, but a lot of them will have, and, and that would be a ranking criteria that a customer would want to use if they had solar, is find one that gives them the most benefit for their overproduction.
The statement was made that LPNL as a electric provider would go away. Is that really, have we made that decision yet that?
Well, not entirely. We, we did have one question at our last board meeting that whether or not we should consider being the polar provider of last resort. And, you know, it, it takes away some of the benefits that I talked about earlier. If we become the provider of last resort, we still have to be involved in power supply decisions. We, we don't, it's not necessarily removing all of the risk that we, that we would like to see removed from our system. So there are some downsides to doing that. We have, we owe the, the board some additional information on that, which we will be presenting tomorrow. There's also, it also requires a more complex billing system, the CIS system, the changes that Ms. Wood talked about earlier. It would require a more complex system and a longer lead time to get that deployed. It's not that we can't do it, it's just going to require more effort up front to design the system that we need and would delay us probably about six months, cost an extra ten, fifteen million dollars to do that. So it's, so that's, we've got to communicate that to the board as a follow-up tomorrow. We'll be doing that tomorrow. So I would say our preference is still not to, to be the provider of last resort, but it's certainly a governing body decision.
We still have, and, generators in Lubbock.
We do.
What will happen to those?
The, we're, we're following the market design changes that are happening at the Public Utility Commission right now. They're, they're looking at some incentives that may justify keeping those generating units longer term just as merchant units. We won't need them to serve our load anymore, but depending on what the final rules are coming out of the PUC, there may be significant value in having generating resources that, that function just as merchant units.
What is the age of some of those generating units?
The oldest was put in in the sixties, the youngest was put in in the nineties, so they're, they're pretty old.
You indicated on your chart from Midland that our rates would be in the middle of that chart. I don't have it on my screen any longer. I wondered where the middle of that chart was.
It's around twelve cents a kilowatt hour.
Okay.
That's kind of where we're at right now.
That's all I have, as long as we don't use acronyms and we'll be the biggest, you know, violators of that. But let's, let's, let's do try not to use.
It makes the presentations much longer.
It does.
It gave me forty-five minutes and I think we're already over.
Yeah, it does. But again, we don't all speak electricity.
Understood.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Chaddis, and then I'll go to Mr. Griffiths if he has anything to add.
Thank you. Mr. McCallum, did I hear you correctly about credit rating? Was that, was that term used?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the people, let's, let's pick on Ms. Mary one more time. She seems to be a popular lady here. If Ms. Mary is having a difficult time making mortgage payment or rent payment plus her meds at the beginning of the year, and she obviously may be having trouble making her utility payments as well, where does that portion of the public, where do they go? Do they, do they go to polar? Are they being, well, I'll let you answer.
Not necessarily. I think there are, there are some programs out there that allow you to, if you pay online or if you have it automatically withdrawn from your credit card on a monthly basis, you get a little bit of a discount on your bill. So there are some more attractive programs if you have credit and can do, can do things like that. If you're a cash-only customer, when we have a lot of those in Lubbock, there's not going to be those kind of attractive deals for you out there. They can still get service, but they just maybe not get the best, best deals that are available. So I wouldn't say that they would automatically be dropped to the provider of last resort, but there, they wouldn't have some of the.
The Bennys?
Some of the better, yeah, the benefits of some of the other programs. Yeah, Matt just mentioned that the determining who the polar is and the terms of the, the polar contract, that will be a governing body decision as well. Y'all have control over that, so I think you can set some guardrails there.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Mr. Griffith.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll be brief. Mr. McCallum, will, there'll still be going forward utility assistant plans as like we have set up today that can be forwarded in the future, correct?
Yes, sir. There are a number of local assistance agencies. Our, our folks work with them very closely, Neighborhood House and Community Development, many others. But, so those will still be there. They'll be coordinating with somebody that won't be in Lubbock though, probably.
Thank, thank you for addressing that.
Yes, sir.
I do appreciate your updates when it comes to reliability because obviously that's been top-of-mind awareness across this community and across the state. The, and the, and the update on the Railroad Commission as to them, what they're doing with natural gas winterization. There's no way as big a infrastructure as this state has that it can be done that quickly. So we wish we could snap our finger on that, but we know it, it's going to take at least another year or two.
Probably, prior for a mild winter. We're having it so far, so maybe keep.
No kidding. The, I, I've said this many times, but I'd like to end by saying this one more. Remember, this is a evolution, not a revolution of how Lubbock gets its power. And these steps are very important that we're taking and I appreciate the data that has been brought today and I appreciate all the speakers in every department that you've had here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Mr. McCallum, let me echo Mr. Griffith's comments. Thank you to your team for your presentation today. I think it's, is very beneficial as we begin our consideration of, of the process on deciding whether or not we opt in or not. You know, a couple of things we have to keep in mind that the ERCOT and the reliability piece is separate from our decision on whether to opt in, okay? Ms. Patterson-Harris, on your question on education, yes, I agree. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the R E Ps, retail electric providers, they will help in that education process.
Yes.
It, it, it's going to be important to them as they come into this free market, as you will, to make sure that they're advertising and advertising simplicity and advertising programs that benefit different, different groups in our community. So you're not, LPNL's not out on an island on this deal and it won't be all up to LPNL to help educate everybody. And then lastly, we talk about the provider of last resort. I feel like there's more discussions. I feel like that's as important as it, as the decision to opt in. And so I look forward to having more of those discussions and making sure we make a decision on the polar that best benefits our ratepayers, because I think that's an important decision we have to make. So, Mr. McCallum, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council, thanks. I think that was a good first discussion. As I mentioned, you'll have more opportunities to engage as we move into next year. We'll be making critical decisions related to this. Our next item on our agenda this afternoon is a follow-up on our street bond discussion. We brought this back up last week and had good discussion about it. We discussed the possibility of a citizen, involving citizens, appointing a citizens' committee to relook at it. I think there was some debate on timing, on when the street bond, when a street bond might be brought back up to a vote. We have an opportunity, there is a possibility to do it in May. That's probably, in my opinion, less desirable. You could go ahead and get the work done for a new council to potentially do, do something in November. But with that, Mr. Atkinson, do you have anything to add on this or?
Just a placeholder slide.
Okay. All right, council, I'll open it up for any thoughts, discussions on this, on whether or not we're ready to appoint? Are you, do you want to delay the appointment of meeting? You want some more time? Appointments of committees? What's your thoughts?
Thank you, sir. Thinking through this since we had our last meeting and, and going back in time as to how we came up with the street bond package, I believe first of all that it's too quick to act. Number one, I agree with you, Mayor Protem, that May would be too early. I think citizen involvement this time needs to be heightened, thus more of, as it goes forward, a more of a town hall approach take place, much like we did with public safety. As far as that, read, when we did public safety, we went out and presented to citizens across this community a plan of changing to community policing and had a lot more public engagement. And maybe we missed that, a lot of that, in my opinion. So I think that it's a little premature to, before the end of the year to do this. I believe that, as we've stated last week, these needs don't go away, but I, I would, I would really like for, my recommendation is the council needs to delay this until the first of next year and bring it back for more discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Ms. Joy.
Well, the work has been done. Work was done well. I think what Mr. Griffith is addressing is that we may need, with citizens, go through the process that those of us on the committee went through. It was not voodoo. It, it was well thought out, prioritized, all of that.
Did you say doodoo or voodoo?
Voodoo. It wasn't that either. Anyway, that, that maybe that's, would be very, very helpful. I agree it should just be done in either a town hall setting or just different meetings all over the city of Lubbock. If we choose, if it's cho, if we choose to do that, committee's not going to help. The one thing that will help, help, happen is the further we go, the more expensive it's going to get. So that we know for sure. We had built into the pricing some room for increase, but not for long-term. And if, if we, you know, the decision's made not to put the bond up again, then we'll just have to handle it through our regular budget and do the best, best that we can. But I'm not in favor of doing anything right now. I do think with at least two positions open on this council, that those decisions need to be made after the May elections. Let's just take a break. Not here, but let's step back and, you know, we've done a lot, we've accomplished a lot. The citizens of Lubbock have accomplished a lot. But let's just take a break and enjoy the holidays and after the first of the year and then see what happens from there.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you very much. You know, that was kind of my thought until I drove down Thirty-Fourth Street the other day and I almost lost my hair. And, and, and I say that in jest, but that's how important it is, is that there are huge needs in this Lubbock community, in every corner of this city. And the further we kick this can down the road, the bigger the issue becomes. I am not for, I'm, I'm not necessarily for a committee doing it because I agree that the work that has been done, I think it was appropriate. I think that the, the locations that were put forth are, are definitely in need. I would that we not take too long to push this further down the road. I believe it's, will affect the cost greatly. And I think that getting back on this horse and riding it and just providing the information that we, in a manner that we did not do leading up to the bond election, needs to take place. If that's town halls, if that's whatever, I think that we do that. I, I feel, and, and I'll take ownership of this, that maybe we were so afraid of, of having conversation about this so it didn't appear that we were pushing folks to, to, to cast their votes one way or the other. I think, I agree that we do this right. I think we provide the information and if in the end the citizens say, no, I'm good with that, I'll move on, I'll just drive down Thirty-Fourth Street again. But I, I don't think that we push it down the road any further because the needs don't go away. And I think that what we miss, we have the ability to provide by giving citizens the information that they need to make the best decision that they can. I believe that that was missing on this deal and my desires is that we get going, we're trying to get the information out to the citizens and get ready to have folks pull the lever one more time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Mr. Chaddis.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Question, I don't know if it's for legal or for the city secretary, but on the calendar, can we make the May election or do we look at November?
That would be a question for, really for the city council. What I can tell you that the deadline to call an election will be February eighteenth.
That answers, that's awfully quick for, for, for May, in my opinion. And that's a lot of work to be done between now and then. But that, that, that answers my question. Thank you. Becky.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Mr. Christian.
I would do anything in my power to get it back on the May ballot. And a couple of reasons, and it's been stated by some of my fellow council members just, just a few minutes ago, I'm scared to death of the cost, what it might cost us in a year. I'm, it just, it really troubles me that, that this election was, this bond package was voted down because it's so important to the present and the future of Lubbock. And as someone who, in a previous life, actually led the charge in the, in the, in the messaging for several bond elections, the retooling of the message for this package, hidden brain surgery. I would suspect that most of us on this dais have heard from citizens that have already given us a good bit of information of what they would suggest needs to change within the messaging and also maybe even some alterations or retooling of the package itself. That could be, and I'm not being, being a little facetious, but that could be done in a matter of days when we, if we were to speak and gather a group of people, not a large group, but a group of people that voted for and even voted against this package, we would know what we need to say to the rest of the community to give them adequate and, and correct information about what this package is and means to the community, first and foremost, from a financial perspective. I was reading some information just yesterday that I suspect that we will have interest raise increases, increase between now and next, and, and next November. And those increases might dictate that if we did have it, put this back on the ballot in November, that we probably would have to reduce the number of projects. in November, that we probably would have to reduce the number of projects that, from what this bond package is right now. I think it could be done by that February date, if we're willing to do it. And I don't mean us, but I've spoken to enough citizens that they're ready to go to work tomorrow. They're ready to go to work tonight practically, to get this package back on the ballot, you know, and the messaging that would make sense, make, not make sense, but is thorough, precise, and people don't get the impression that this bond package included, was a vote, also that was included on this bond package was a downtown civic park, and I heard that a couple of times. And then other people say, I would have voted for it if 114th Street would have been on it. Well, 114th Street was on it. Once again, as somebody that's been involved, deeply involved in the messaging of bond packages over a 30-year career in marketing and advertising, this, for us to retool this right away is not brain surgery, and it could be done, and it could be on the mail ballot, a May ballot, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Ms. Joy.
Well, and I don't think we should put it all on the council, because we, we cannot advocate. We can give answers and that sort of thing, but we couldn't advocate. But it doesn't all fall on us, because this was not a citizen vote in some cases on, on the streets. It was a political move. And I don't have to call names, because the people who are involved in that political move know who they are. And it had nothing to do with the need, or the timing, or the cost. Because we structured it in such a way that as citizens, we would not have felt much impact other than our streets would have been better. So that's what concerns me, that is, if the same political force out there that was advocating secretly against the bond, and not coming to the council and asking questions, if they're going to continue to do that, then it really doesn't do any good to put it back. And that's the way I feel about it, and I am correct, that that was one of the issues that was going on in this city. People who really care about Lubbock don't politicize street bonds. And that's what happened.
Mr. Christian. Mr. Christian.
I just wanted to clarify that, and I agree with Ms. Joy, that this body would not be the messengers. We would support those messengers, and those messengers need to be the citizens of Lubbock. And I also wholeheartedly agree with Ms. Joy, that people that politicize this thing should be ashamed of themselves. Also, on a lesser shame level, those people that, and I mentioned this in our last meeting, that made this tribal or territorial, that if, if this, one of these pieces of, that was on the, on the bond package wasn't on their front door, or wasn't on their street, that they were not going to vote for it. And that especially involved Broadway. Broadway was, is the heart, and is the beginning of where, the beginning of this city, and I would like to think that we could get together and figure out how to, what to do with these, the brick streets that are so important to our history of our city, whether it's curb to curb, whether it's hybrids or whatever it is, but let's put down those territorial sticks and swords, and let's figure it out, and quit this nonsense about what we're going to do with Broadway, because something needs to be done, and it should be done sooner rather than later, and we can figure out what the final design is. And if, if most of us on the dais may remember, that I believe it was last August, that we passed an ordinance that stated how the process would take place as far as approval of anything that would go on Broadway, too. And the citizens would definitely have some input on, on what the final design may or may not be. If I think all of y'all remember that, there's about five or six different layers and different groups that would have, have input on what the final design of Broadway would be. So I just forgot about that, and I looked it up the other day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I don't think there's any lack of enthusiasm or passion today for the street bond. But I appreciate the spirited discussion. I think what I'm hearing is that we need some time to continue to contemplate this and get, get hopefully back on a similar page. I, I'm concerned about pushing it to May, or moving so fast to May, and you and I have talked, you know how I feel about that. And Ms. Joy, I, I also think there could be value in including some citizen input as we, to look at it again, as we bring forth whatever might be a new package. Something to think about would be, one thing that's a given is there will be new faces on this council in May. And you could also be in a situation that you might not seek that council until July, if there are runoffs. And we all know up here that have been here for years, that we quickly start budget right after end of July, 1st of August. So it's my thought that if we could do some work before, and deliver some product before the May elections, that we would have something to hand, put in the hands of the new council, so that they could make a decision, and if it was their desire to have something on the November ballot, then the work would be done. Anyway, I just, I offer that food for thought. Mr. Atkinson, I sense that we need to take this back up on January 11th, and see if we can make some final decisions after the 1st of the year and the holidays on how we move forward with this. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get the hang of it over here.
That's okay. I just want to put this on the record, so that we know. A little turkey and dressing over Christmas would not change my mind.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, we've, we've got one more item today in work session, is to look at ARPA one more time. I believe, let's see, I've got the input correctly. Mr. Atkinson has a brief presentation. Again, we're not making any decisions, there's no decision to make, just if there's any further input today as it relates to ARPA funds. Mr. Atkinson.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council.
There we go. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Interest of time, I'm going to cut straight to the updated ledger. So council, based on your input last Tuesday, we filled in your total there at the top, there's 45.85 million that's available, that's the adjusted number based on the county's participation in the joint public health project. Taking what's listed as placeholders, we have a $29.1 million balance that has not tentatively been assigned. None of this has been made final, but to continue discussions, there's about 29.1. Quick reminder, we're at a recommended 2.5 million for housing projects, that funding at least two separate projects. Cybersecurity, 2.25. Diversion Center, this is not the homeless project, this is the project at Star Care. That's 3.5 million, and of course, the county is providing, I believe, 4.5 to that. Arts, we have the placeholder at 1 million. Broadband pilot project, this is primarily in East Lubbock, would be 2 million. We have set aside 3.5 million to work on the homeless problem. Again, understanding we don't exactly have a project assigned to that, we're rather making a reservation to allow us to work towards it. Job training at 2.0 million. Question was asked at the last meeting, could we begin to look at some data in terms of industry, occupation, other things that were in high demand or in short supply? We received some of that information late yesterday, have not had a chance to put it in a form, to be able to present that to you, but the next time we have this discussion, we absolutely will. We specifically called out nonprofits and public safety improvements, had a small bit of discussion, have not put a placeholder for either of those two. Moving over to the column on the right side of your screen, these are topics that we have discussed, but also not moved over into the placeholder category just yet. Small business assistance, council, if I recall your prior discussion, that needs to remain on the list, but to use my words rather than y'all's, that would kind of be a last dollar in type situation. So we know that there's been a lot of money flow through that, this council has done that before, we know Lubbock County will be doing that. There certainly will be need at the end, but I took it, the council wished to kind of, I think the phrase was keep the powder dry, until we got to that point. Utility infrastructure has been on our list from the beginning. Would note that related to the housing project, that's kind of mixing and matching between the two categories there. And then we've had parks mentioned as well. Mayor Protem, with that, I'll stop and throw it over to the council. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Council, any further comments, additions, thoughts on ARPA money? Ms. Joy.
Yes. On the small business part of it, there are a lot of loans that are out there, low-interest loans. But that's not what I was thinking about. I was thinking about grants for those small businesses who got nothing. They didn't get any of them, any money from any source whatsoever. And Mr. Griffith and I were, and Ms. Patterson-Harris as well, were meeting with South Plains Association of Governments this morning, and they are set up to handle those grants. So if we can decide upon a number, that they can get those turned around quickly. If you will remember, the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance grants that were made, they turned those around in 48 hours. We can't do anything in 48 hours, but they can. And so it would be my suggestion that we, and I'm, the number I'm going to use is $5 million, and that it be handled through South Plains Association of Governments, and that it be strictly for those businesses who received no help whatsoever during the earlier distributions, and that they be grants. So that would be my thought at this time. Now, that doesn't mean that we couldn't change that number up or down, but I think we need a placeholder.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. You make valid points.
Oh, and I had asked the two chiefs to take a hard look at public safety improvements. Where are we on those?
We, the chiefs and I have not had an opportunity to meet at the same time since last Tuesday, so we will.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You just had?
The public safety improvement, that was my question.
Okay, okay, no problem. Mr. Christian.
Yeah, thank you, sir. I just wanted to follow up on some comments I made about regarding parks, and the idea of putting some funds into parks that we could use, that our grant writer could use to look at matching grants for different amenities in our parks. And I was asked by someone about what type of grants are available for matching grants, and if, it's almost if you, if you can come up with a venue or something we'd want to put in the parks, there's grants available. And I looked on, with the help of Ms. Witcher, we looked at some, and found some, for example, in Grapevine, they got a half a million dollars through Parks and Wildlife. And I knew we just, I know we just got some grants from Parks and Wildlife, too, but this, this involve, this grant was for nature trails, drainage improvement, broad, broadwalks or boardwalks, pavilions, terrace seating, picnic facilities. It goes on and on to, of where those grants are available, if we had some, I'm going to call it a bank within our Parks and Recreation Department that we could use to then go out and solicit matching grants. To answer the question that Mr. Griffith had yesterday, yes, there's even grants for pickleball courts that I found that are matching grants. So I just want us to think through that. We have an opportunity, and once, I feel like a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity with this money, to put some, put some funds in parks and recs that would, would make our grant writer more armed and dangerous, if you will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Okay. Council, we've had a couple of additions, and I believe they are good additions. What I'm hearing, Mr. Atkinson, is we've earmarked $5 million for small business assistance, and then I guess what you're suggesting, Ms. Joy, is that it would be businesses that weren't, didn't have access to EIDL, or PPP, or other related SBA federal programs. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct, or even if they participated in the LIDA program.
Yes, ma'am. There were the LIDA grants, there were, of course, community grants went to the nonprofits. The city council had the dollars that it gave out in grants, they're relatively small grants, but those were given out as well.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Joy. And then I'm hearing the potential to leverage some of the dollars with grants for parks. Is that correct, council? Okay. Do we have a suggested number? Do you have a number on that, Mr.? Three? I see a 3 million down here, so earmark, we've got a two on one end. Let's, want to earmark it for three and bring it back up for discussion at a point, at a time in the future. Is that good? Absolutely. All right. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Okay, council, thank you for that. That concludes the items that we have to discuss in work session today. Let's look at the pulls before we excuse ourselves into exec. I believe, let's see, this has moved around a little bit. I believe we have one pull, 616, am I correct? Mayor Protem, if the council would, we have item 616 as a pull, that will be considered separately today. Staff would ask that you take item 6.30, also pull that not for consideration, it will come back on January 11. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Council, do you concur, is there anything else or any other pulls at the pleasure of the council? So 616 is a pull, Ms. Patterson-Harris? And then staff is asked to pull, remove 630. Okay, very well. Council, we do have a need for an executive session. City council will hold an executive session today for the purpose of consulting with the city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation, or settlement agreement, or to hold consultation with attorney, under section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, also to purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, and the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices, or a security audit under section 551.076 of the Texas Government Code. And finally, competitive matters of the public power utilities under section 551.086 of the Texas Government Code. It is 248, and we are recessed into executive session. Good afternoon, welcome to the Lubbock City Council meeting. We are back from executive session. We have a couple of fun items for you during the ceremonial portion of our meeting today, and part of it is entertainment. I'd like to introduce Lubbock hour, and they'll start our entertainment this evening. Let's see, we've got to get your mic on.
Well, I guess I don't really need a mic.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. We're very honored to be here. Standing in the city before you are members of the top performing ensemble at Lubbock High School and New Orchestra. These are members of the chamber group. These are members of the chamber group. We couldn't be more honored to be here today. Thank you for having us. And as soon as you play here, we have another concert at Dwight Holly Hall at 15, so come on now if you want your little music. We're going to play some selections from the Nutcracker, and we're going to end with breakfast. Thank you once again.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Okay, counsel, thank you for that. That concludes the items that we have to discuss in work session today. Let's look at the pulls before we excuse ourselves into exec. I believe, let's see, this has moved around a little bit. I believe we have one pull, 616, am I correct?
Mayor Pro Tim, if, if the council would, we have item 616 as a pull that will be considered separately today. Staff would ask that you take item 6.30. Also pull that not for consideration, it will come back on January 11.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Counsel, do you concur? Is there anything else or any other pulls at the pleasure of the council? So, so 616 is a, is a pull, Ms. Patterson-Harris? And then staff is asked to pull, remove 630? Okay, very well. Counsel, we do have a need for an executive session. City council will hold an executive session today for the purpose of consulting with the city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, or, or to hold consultation with attorney under section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, also to purchase, exchange lease or, or value of real property under section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, and the deployment or specific occasions for implementation of security personnel or devices, or a security audit under section 551.076 of the Texas Government Code. And finally, competitive matters of the public power utili, public power utilities under section 551.086 of the Texas Government Code. It is 248, and we are recessed into executive session. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Lubbock City Council meeting. We are back from executive session. We have a couple of fun items for you during the ceremonial portion of our meeting today, and part of it is entertainment. I'd like to introduce Lubbock High, and they'll start our entertainment this evening. So, let's see, we've got to get your mic on.
Well, I guess I don't really need a mic.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. We're very honored to be here. Standing in the city before you are members of the top performing ensemble at Lubbock High School and New Orchestra. These are members of the chamber group. We couldn't be more honored to be here today. Thank you for having us. And as soon as you play here, we have another concert at Dwight Holly Hall at 15, so come on now if you want your little music. We're going to play some selections from the Nutcracker, and we're going to end with breakfast. Thank you once again.
Thank you, we have here just a little momento that we want to present to Lisa, then I hope that we'll find an appropriate place to hang this to remind all about the commitment of the employees of the city of Lubbock to our community through their contributions in United Way. Lisa, thank you again for your work.
You want to try to get a picture of this group?
Yes.
You know you're tall. You know you're tall.
I know I'm not tall. I'm standing next to my favorite song.
Mrs. Jones, third grade, that's what I'm used to. I'm a D in that.
There's some more room on this side, too. Anyone?
I feel like I'm like really in the front.
Sorry. You're fine.
There we go. Not everybody wants. I'm just going to, we're just going to.
Just stay.
I don't, okay, all right. I was like, as long as we can see Lisa's thing, okay, we're good.
Look for the cameras.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Are you all good? Are you good? Good? Good.
All right, if you're following along in the agenda, you think we're done with ceremonial items, but we have one more. So for this one, if counsel, y'all, y'all want to join me down here? We need Bob Goodwin in the house. Bob, would you please join us down here?
One last time.
Oh, yeah, Bob, one more time. Come stand right here. One more time, buddy.
Thank you so much, I think.
So, today's a bittersweet day for those of us, especially in the council suite, because today is Bob Goodwin's last day. And let me, let me give you some background on Bob. 33 years at the city of Lubbock, nine years as city council chief of staff to present. He ran the cemetery, he was a communications manager, nine years as assistant to the mayor and the city council, three years in Parks and Rec.
Three years in Parks and Rec.
Quite a colorful career at the city of Lubbock.
Definitely been interesting.
Long lifetime Lubbockite. At one point in time, he got kicked out to Siberia.
Yes.
From the mayor and council's office, but he worked his way back up.
It wasn't the end of the world, you could just see it from there.
Yeah, that's true. So Bob met his wife Sherry while they were working at the city of Lubbock, very happily married with two children, Zach and Jacob. He's a graduate of Coronado High School.
Go Mustangs.
Go Plainsmen! Sorry about that, Bob.
It's all right, it's all right.
Right, Mr. Griffith?
Go Mustangs.
Go Lubbock High.
Westerners were just.
Bob has a bachelor's of arts degree and a master's of public administration from Texas Tech. He
Please join us in the pledges to the American and the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Pastor, thank you so much. Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is a recognition from the United Way. And at this time, Glenn Cochran and Mark Griffin and team will make their way up. And anybody who, any staff that participated in the United Way campaign, raise your hands, stand up, come up here also, please. We don't have to introduce United Way and the great things that United Way does in our community. But it's particularly important to recognize what the City of Lubbock does and what our staff has done to give back. And we had a record campaign for the City of Lubbock contributions to United Way, and I think that's remarkable. And those members of our team here at the City of Lubbock that are standing here with the team from United Way are to be recognized and thanked for that. So with that, I'll turn it over, Mark. We hand it over to you, and I'll give you the mic. You can bend that mic back this way if you want to talk that way. It's flexible that way, you see? So, go for it.
One thing, I'm not very flexible. Well, on behalf of the United Way, the 23 partner agencies and the 100-plus volunteers that worked tirelessly in this campaign, I want to commend the City of Lubbock and the leadership. Just some numbers, and Blue can appreciate this probably more than anyone else. Real quickly, in 2020, raised, the City of Lubbock raised about $90,000 for the campaign in a COVID year, the most challenging year we've ever had in a campaign. The staff and the chairman for the campaign get to set the goal for the next year. And so we set it at $109,000 for the City of Lubbock. You'll want to know that they raised $150,000. All those who surround me deserve real credit, but let me just name a few if I might, please. These types of campaigns and the energy behind them are driven by the leadership. And if the leaders are interested, if the leaders are committed, if the leaders are engaged, typically, the goal is achieved. City Manager Atkinson, Police Chief Mitchell, Fire Chief Ferguson, but most importantly, team leader Lisa Thompson. She's the one who herded those cats, okay? I know, I don't know when you do your annual budget, but may I be the first to endorse a raise for this lady right now? I might even come out of my own pocket on that one. Fabulous, fabulous job. But the dollars don't tell the whole story. It's the commitment that surrounds me, it's the passionate commitment in this community that's going to serve these who need it most, who access our 23 partner agencies. They are the winners out of this. But I want this group, I want the City of Lubbock to take special pride because, quite frankly, they set the tone for the committee, for the whole campaign. And early on, I saw the indications of what was coming out of the city's response to their engagement. And I told Glenn and the staff, I said, I think we got a chance this year. The city's leading the way, like they do in so many things. So Mayor Pro Tim Massengale, counsel, thanks for sharing Lisa with us, for providing leadership and engagement and encouragement for this campaign. We're better for it, there's healing because of it, and there's hope that's delivered in our community through it. Thank you very much.
We have here just a little memento that we want to present to Lisa, then I hope that we'll find an appropriate place to hang this to remind all about the commitment of the employees of the City of Lubbock to our community through their contributions in United Way. Lisa, thank you again for your work.
Do you want to try to get a picture of this group?
Yes.
I know I'm not tall.
Stand next to my favorite softball player.
Mrs. Jones, third grade, that's where I'm used to.
There's some more room on this side, too.
I feel like I'm like really in the front.
Sorry. You're fine.
Not everybody wants.
Everybody wants to stay here.
I'm just gonna, we're just gonna.
Stay.
I don't, okay, all right. I was like, as long as we can see Lisa's thing, okay, we're good.
Look for the cameras.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Are you good? Are you good? Good?
All right.
I was like, as long as we can see Lisa's thing, okay, we're good.
Look for the cameras.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
Are you good? Are you good? Good?
items, but we have one more. So for this one, if council, y'all want to join me down here? We need Bob Goodwin in the house. Bob, would you please join us down here?
One last time.
Oh, yeah, Bob, one more time. Come stand right here. One more time, buddy.
Thank you so much, I think.
So today's a bittersweet day for those of us, especially in the council suite, because today is Bob Goodwin's last day. And let me, let me give you some background on Bob. 33 years at the City of Lubbock, nine years as City Council Chief of Staff to present. He ran the cemetery, he was a communications manager, nine years as assistant to the mayor and the city council, three years in Parks and Rec.
Three years in Parks and Rec.
Quite a colorful career at the City of Lubbock.
Definitely been interesting.
Long lifetime Lubbockite. At one point in time, he got kicked out to Siberia.
Yes.
From the mayor and council's office, but he worked his way back up.
It wasn't the end of the world, you could just see it from there.
Yeah, that's true. So Bob met his wife Sherri while they were working at the City of Lubbock, very happily married with two children, Zach and Jacob. He's a graduate of Coronado High School.
Go Mustangs.
Go Plainsmen! Sorry about that, Bob.
It's all right, it's all right.
Right, Mr. Griffith?
Go Mustangs.
Go Lubbockite.
Westerners were just.
Bob has a bachelor's of arts degree and a master's of public administration from Texas Tech. He got his master's before he came to work.
Yep.
Here at the city. He's worked with elected officials, senior management, municipal staff, and community leaders for over three decades. What's particularly special to me is Bob worked with my dad.
Mine, too.
That's very true. That's very, very true.
Both mine and Sheila's dad, that's true.
My great-granddad.
He's Lubbock's unofficial historian, he's an avid storyteller, and always, always greeted people with a smile at the City of Lubbock. His personality will be greatly missed. The 11th floor will not be the same tomorrow, Bob. He's a tremendous writer, and for those of us that rely on him for that, I don't know that anyone will be able to fill his shoes. But Bob, we wanted to take a minute and thank you for your service to the City of Lubbock. We want to thank you for your friendship, and we wish you the best, and we wish you weren't going.
I understand. Thank you.
You're very welcome. I want to give the council, if anybody wants to make any comments. Counsel?
Oh, goodness. We're gonna roast you.
I hope so.
Yeah, well, Bob came to the council suite when I first came on council, so we already knew each other, but got to know each other better. But I was privileged to go to Japan with his oldest son Zach when we did our ambassador exchange, and that was a real pleasure because, first of all, it was Bob's son. And he knew that if he got in trouble, somebody would take care of him, and that was, that was me.
Thank you so much.
Go, Mr. Jackson.
You gotta roast it better than that.
Gotta roast it. What can I say? I've known Bob for about six years, as long as I've been in office. Always, always great attitude. I rejoice in the fact of calling him a friend.
Yes, sir.
He's always been there. It's beyond description. And I found a really good quote that pretty much surmises Mr. Bob, as I call him. It says, "Service to others is the rent we pay for your room here on earth." That's Bob. That's from Mr. Muhammad Ali. Bob can't do enough for anyone. Anytime there's a question, Bob always finds the answer. Walk-in historian. I've asked him many, many a question, it's never been, I don't know, he's got the answer right there on the spot. The, I won't, the, he won't be here tomorrow, sounds too... It doesn't sound right. Hate to see you go. Wish you and your family all the best. Our loss, Metroplexus gain.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, my friend.
I imagine our proclamations will sound a lot different from here on out with Bob's. But I wrote this about Bob, and I'd just like to share it with you. There's lots of Bobs that have walked this earth, Bob Hope, Bob Barker, Bob Marley, Bob Wills, Bob Cousy, Bob Newhart, and of course, how can we forget the General Bob Knight? This is just the tip of the Bob iceberg, but you're the coolest Bob of them all. Bob the Iceman Goodwin, always stirred, never shaken, regardless of the situation. You will be sorely missed. I am fortunate to call you friend. Good luck. Arrivederci, adios, au revoir, till we meet again. God bless.
Thank you, sir.
Is that a Bob bird, Glenn? Is it a Bob bird?
I first met Bob when I was a little girl. I couldn't help myself, y'all. I couldn't help it. No, and I say that because my dad served on the council for 20 years, and Bob was a man that would swing by 24/05.
Arm glove.
And drop, exactly, and drop his books off, and did everything that he could to ensure that the needs of not only my dad, but the council at those times was taken care of. Little did I know, when I was a young lady, that I would be on the receiving end of the same care and concern that my dad received.
Thank you.
So it's been a long time.
It has.
That you have been a part of, like, the walls of City Hall. And I can't imagine the number of people whose lives have been touched and changed because you gave a hoot, no matter where you were, no matter what you were doing. Bob was a man that wrote the speeches, but I'd tell him to back up off of mine. But even the words that he provided to be able to construct the things that I did, I appreciate you so much. So from the Patterson household.
Definitely.
Not just mine, the Patterson household, I say a great big thank you, a great big God bless you, and we'll miss you. Bless you.
Love you. You're welcome.
Mr. Atkinson.
All right, Bob, that's enough seriousness. I think there's quite a few people in the room that may know, maybe not the timeline. Slightly over 25 years ago, I came to the City of Lubbock. I came as an intern. Bob was the intern coordinator at the time. He had a specially designed closet that we all worked out of, concrete floors, sometimes the heating worked, usually the best in the summer. Sometimes the air conditioning worked, and as you would guess, usually in the winter. Bob was really proud that he had budgeted technology for us. A technology had green screens that flashed, and we had to shove these things called floppy disks in and out of them to make them work. All those disks were full of Bob's speeches, writings, and his letters.
Thank you so much.
Back then, we didn't get emails, we got letters from our constituents, and us interns, our job was to answer them. Of course, Bob had already written every letter that could be written. If we dared to change him, he would find it, he would know. Bob taught us a bunch, and it wasn't just me. He taught us a bunch. Taught me about hairstyles.
Thank you, sir.
Didn't stick real well, but mine's easier to comb in the morning. So usually, in the morning, we get to hassle Bob about that. Bob kept up with us a little bit. He was teaching us, training us, he was kind of teaching us how to be in public service. Bob's a little absent-minded, I don't know if anybody in here knew that. He once lost one of his interns for three months. That was me. My therapy sessions are almost over, and unfortunately, they're going to end tonight as Bob leaves us. In seriousness, I really could sit up here and hassle Bob for the rest of the night, and it would all be well deserved.
Well deserved is right.
Well deserved, well earned, too.
Well earned, too, yeah.
But I talked to Bob yesterday, and you know, the thing that strikes me, every one of us that works here, we come to work every day, and we know who our customers are. They're the residents of our city. We all have different tasks that we do, but we do it for them. And we do it because it's public service. We look around us, we've got this beautiful building now, we've got all the older buildings, new water towers, Lake Allen Henry, all things that occurred on Bob's watch, all things that will stand forever. But what hit me that was more important than that, Bob's legacy's not going to be the buildings, the water towers, or the lakes, the parks, or any of that. Bob's legacy's going to be people. So over the course of his 33 years, Bob has taught all of us, and he's taught dozens more throughout the state of Texas that have gone on to do public service. And we've all done that, certainly me, number one on the list, by using each and every day things that I learned from Bob when we were locked in those closets all those many years ago. And to cap it off with irony, as Bob leaves here, I've had the chance to come back and work with him now for just five years, Bob will leave here and go to work now with another one of his interns that continued on in public service and is doing a phenomenal job in his community in the Metroplex. So Bob, thank you, man.
I've had the pleasure of working with Bob through my eight years. Everybody needs to know, he actually is a hell of a three-point basketball shooter.
Thank you so much.
Obviously, it's been spoken about his writing skills, his humor, his laughter, his willingness to help citizens of our city. Last week, we were blessed to have a Lubbock music icon legend, Joe Ely, visit us. So Joe is in a meeting with us, and he's amazed at Bob's office, because Bob has this great music heritage in his office until the day. And I hope somebody left for me, but I'm sure took it with them. But truthfully, I want to say this, and I mean it with my heart. Last week, we had a Lubbock music icon legend with Lubbock's latest legend icon, Bob Goodwin.
Would you like the mic, Mr. Goodwin?
Not really. This is, I guess so. I was not expecting this, and I'm very much thankful to the folks up here who said very nice words. I really do just, I guess, want to reiterate that this 33 years working for the City of Lubbock has been a very enriching experience for me, and it's something where you get to actually see the results of the work you do. And I know we have a lot of city employees here in the audience right now, and there's something to be said about having the opportunities to serve the public and also to feel good about what you do. And the other thing I've always liked about working for the city was that we have a lot of diversity, everything from police officers to solid waste workers to librarians to health people, and all of them know what they're doing and do good jobs with their work. And they're all nice people who have a public servant's heart. So again, I think that what we do is very noble, so, and I've enjoyed working with everybody.
Well, we want to get a picture before we wrap this up. Bob, I want you to know that, we already know this, that you're leaving a group that you should know you're loved, and I'm sorry that the mayor can't be with us today, but he would echo everybody's comments. And so anyway, we'll miss you, come back and visit us. I'd like to get a group, a picture, a good picture of this group before we move on and get the business of the day.
Is there such?
There is.
Can I get my old boss, Becky, in here? Come on, Becky, please.
A good picture of this group.
A good picture of this group. Well, you know, there's only, there's only so much they can do.
Have it rented the camera?
Which side am I doing? Come on.
Let's come on one side of the podium.
Come on one side of the podium.
And then you get in the middle, Bob, and then let's get a good photo, something that can be reproduced and drawn on, you know. Squeeze in Pasopodi in here.
Waist up, waist up.
Waist up.
Three, two, one. I'm not going to four, five, eight, but two, three.
Thank you for indulging us with Bob, it was important to spend a little time and dote on him a little bit, we're certainly going to miss him. It's 5:09, and I'll call our meeting to order. First item on our agenda this evening is citizen comments. I believe we've got one signed up for citizen comments. I believe this is a situation on 7/20 that they, this individual wants to go and speak now. They're not going to be available for the hearing related to the zone case. So at this time, I see, I don't see him, is Thomas Payne? Oh, there he is, I can't see you, Thomas. Mr. Payne, if you would come up, please. Mr. Payne speaking on item 7/20. As a reminder, you'll have three minutes, Mr. Payne, and we'll give you a 30-second warning if you would identify yourself for the record.
Thomas Payne, 15309, FM 1730 in Lubbock County. I just wanted to speak early because, as Councilman Massengill said, I'm going to be indisposed. My daughter is playing the trumpet solo tonight at Cooper's Performing Arts Center, and I can't miss that.
Understood.
I just wanted to say a few words. The first one is that, you know, I can speak of Mr. Goodwin as a person who doesn't work in City Hall, and all I can tell you is that he was just as much a gentleman the first time he laid eyes on me when I was loitering around the building, not necessarily invited, as he has been ever since. I don't know how to say anything better. And we'll all miss him. I also want to mention quickly that it's a little incongruous for me to have someone who broke my thumb on a church basketball court talking about basketball and Mr. Goodwin. Mr. Griffith? I want to talk briefly about my, the annexation case that's on the agenda tonight for 7/20. And I wanted to speak because I want, I want to say upfront that when Ms. Joy says, "Where's the proponent?", and I don't rise, I want everyone to know why. I'm excited about the annexation case that we have on the agenda tonight at 7/20. I think it's an important opportunity for the City of Lubbock. I'll talk at some length in January. We have additional items of annexation on the agenda, and this one will be on the agenda I also want to express my appreciation to many members of the city staff who were instrumental in getting this on, on the agenda tonight, especially our Assistant City Manager Jessica McCracken. I know now who's running the city. I know y'all can't ask me any questions, so I'm not going to offer to answer any, but I will leave you with the words of, I would say, our favorite Viking, the mayor is not here, but he would have said, "Don't look back, we're not going that way." Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. That is our only speaker signed up for comment today. Next item on our agenda are the minutes. We have minutes to be approved from the October 19th Special City Council meeting, which was the Electric Utility Board, November 16th, 2021 Regular City Council meeting, and November 17th, Special City Council meeting that was joint meeting with the Commissioners Court. Those minutes were included in your packet for your review prior to the meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, seven to zero. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Items considered, items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and are enacted by one motion without separate discussion. If the city council desires to discuss an item, the item is removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. This evening, we have two items pulled from the consent agenda for separate discussion. It's items 63 and 616, if my memory is working right. Counsel, is there anything from the dice to the contrary? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, less items 63 and items 616.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Christian, thank you, Mr. Chaddis. All those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Motion passes, seven to zero.
Six.
I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, you're right. Six to zero on the prior votes for six to zero. Thank you for... Thank you for the correction. Okay. First item is 63. This is a second reading of an ordinance from Engineering. Are we going to get an update from Mr. Keenum first, and then we'll entertain a motion on this one? Mr. Keenum, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Protim, counsel. This is second read. You approved the first read last week. And what you should have before you is the replacement, we, you approved what's before you on first read. What was in the agenda packet was a prior version, and we didn't swap it out. With our meetings back to back, we got confused amongst ourselves. And so this corrected version that you have is what you passed the first time. However, we do need to fix one minor thing of that ordinance, which is in section 2204, 045A. I believe that's on page two of your handout. And basically, all this does is change from Class C wastewater operator to a Class II wastewater operator. Class C is for plant operators, and this is for collection or the distribution, collection of wastewater lines. So that was just a minor change, and Public Works helped us get that fixed, so we appreciate their help on that one. That's the only minor modification we need, and so we would need an amendment to modify based on that. I believe somebody might have a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Keenum. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Keenum? Okay, hearing none. Do I have a motion on this item?
Move for approval.
Hang on, just, we've got a sub-motion, I think, one. I'm sorry.
My apologies. Mayor Protim?
Thank you. For item 6.3 before us, I've moved to amend the wording in section 22.04.045A to change Class C wastewater operator license to Class II wastewater operator license. Okay, I've got a motion. It's actually a substitute motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. All right, Mr. Griffith, thank you for that. Any other questions or comments from counsel on this item? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes six to zero. My apologies. Next item on your agenda is item 616. It's on page 573. It's a resolution from Business Development considering or authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Bressard Group, DBA, DBT, TBG Partners. I believe we have a presentation from Ms. Girardi. We'll hear from her, and then we'll entertain a motion on this one. Ms. Girardi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim and counsel. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I'm excited to have a chance to visit with you about taking the next step in our civic park process. Just to give a quick reminder of how we got to this point, and then I'll give you an update on the action we're looking at tonight, but almost exactly a year ago, we must, by one day, you all took action to approve our first contract with TBG Partners, which was to provide professional services for a schematic design for the proposed civic park at 1301 Broadway. Just a couple of months ago, on September 28th, you all approved a resolution following a recommendation from our CBD TIF board and approved the civic park project itself to be located at that proposed location at 1301 Broadway, utilizing the wind and water design, which was the output of that original contract, the schematic design that was put together by TBG Partners. And so following that resolution, the CBD TIF board started negotiations with TBG Partners on the next step in our civic park project. And so that is the contract that we are presenting to you all tonight. The scope of services, which I'll go a little bit more in depth on the next slide, essentially gets us through construction of the civic park. TBG would provide oversight for the construction process, but they will, prior to that, be developing design and construction documents for the project. Did just want to make a note on this slide, really to reiterate to the public where the funding for this project has come from thus far. The CBD TIF board did fully fund the original contract for that schematic design with TBG Partners. They have also budgeted the dollars for the contract you all are considering tonight as well. So, so far, they have fully funded what we've done so far in this project. And just as a reminder, again, to the public, their revenue is generated through property tax increment that's generated within the CBD geographic boundary and must be spent or reinvested in that boundary. And so they feel very strongly about this project. They're excited about the direction that we're going. And we do have a member of the TIF board here tonight. If you would like to hear from him, our incoming board chair, Dan Williams, is hot off a ski trip from Colorado and came straight here from the airport, if you all have questions for him. Scope of services, as I mentioned before, includes a variety of things to get us prepared for actual construction on the park, beginning with coordination of demolition. The CBD TIF, again, has funded the cost of demolition, but TBG Partners will work very closely with our director facilities to facilitate the demolition of the parking structure and the existing building, once we move forward, hopefully with the contract tonight. They will also help with site preparation and then design development and construction document development for the major components of the park. We are moving forward with the assumption that we will be fundraising for what you all saw as the base scope for the design of the civic park. We have some add-on extra should fundraising be extremely successful that could alter the scope of this contract. But for now, we are hoping to be able to construct the park that you see before you, which is not lacking in beauty or amenity. But we certainly have some extras we could add on if we're very successful in fundraising. And so they will help with the design and development of all of these features, and I can go into more detail on that if you would like. You can see a proposed schedule here. Our contract is written for thirty, a period of 36 months. That does include a year of park construction, and so two years for us to demolish the existing infrastructure, get the site ready, and then go through the construction document development phase. The weeks that you see on this slide do not equal 36 months. That was intentional. We do want to have some contingency for some of the supply chain issues that we're dealing with today, if there, if we decide to incorporate additional public input sessions or any of those types of things throughout the project. We want them to have the ability to take the right amount of time to get this right. And so we've given them a full three years, but we don't anticipate it will take that amount of time. The contract price is not to exceed $971,000. And again, that is budgeted in the CBD TIF's budget for this fiscal year. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Girardi. Questions? Ms. Patterson-Harris for Ms. Girardi.
Thank you. I don't have a question, but I want to definitely point out something. If you could take the slides back to slide number right there, I just wanted to make sure that we point out that the park and the things that the CBD TIF will be responsible for excludes Broadway.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure that we point that out for citizens. I think as things have transpired through the city, there's been some confusion. So I want to make sure that we know that anything pertaining to the park does not include Broadway, does not include Broadway. And as you stated again, that the things that will be taking place, there has, it has been budgeted thus far.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Christian?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protim. I think it might be good if your new chair might give us a little bit of information about fundraising, exactly how that's going to take place, and how the TIF is going to be involved or not involved. I think it, for the public, it might be good to, some clarification on how all that's going to take place. So I think that, I would appreciate a little details
Sure.
on how that fundraising is going to go about. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Mr. Williams.
Apologize for the attire.
How was the snow?
Well, it snowed a couple feet before we landed.
Oh, okay.
So it was, it was really good, but taking off was an adventure, to say the least, today. So we were delayed several hours. So I apologize for the attire this evening, but wanted to make it here in case there were some questions, because this is something that I think the CBD TIF has really supported and understands the importance of green space in the downtown space. And obviously, our job is to create an environment in downtown that we, that people of Lubbock are excited to come to and enjoy. And so in regards to the fundraising efforts, there's already some fundraising efforts underway. Is that something that we can talk about? That's been discussed already with a couple of foundations here in Lubbock have already come alongside and really want to support this location and what this, this could be. So our, our goal is to create two committees for this project. One would be for fundraising and one would be for project oversight. So I was a part of the tornado memorial, and we learned a lot of things through the fundraising process of that, where we raised four and a half million dollars for that project. And the City of Lubbock really came alongside us, the businesses and everybody. And, but I think that what we want to do is have two committees, because I think there's, there's a long-term effort here that we really think is important to a park like this and what kind of events that we could create here. So I think that the Oversight Committee is something that will continue to go on and then plan for a future 501(c)(3) entity that would help us to, to maintain and create events and create, and foster an environment at the park that is wonderful for the City of Lubbock. So I hope that kind of answers some of the questions of what we've really tried to learn from this, and we're going to continue learning. We have a trip on Thursday to go down to the, to visit the park at Midland. They have a beautiful park that they just finished, and they created a 501(c)(3) that helped maintain that and is, is going to help that ongoing. So I think we're, we're dedicated to learning more and more about how to create something that is really special. I think I've visited a lot of the downtowns, and that's one of the things that, the, the green spaces are something that is really attractive to, as we continue to grow more and more in housing down here, we're going to need that space where people can, you know, come out of an apartment and go to a place like this and enjoy life. And so we hope everybody in Lubbock enjoys it, so. You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other questions from counsel for Ms. Girardi or Mr. Williams before we get a motion on this item? Okay. Thank you both. Don't go far. Counsel, do I have a motion on this item?
Move for approval. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Thank you, Mr. Christian. Okay, counsel, any discussion on this item? Okay. Hearing none. Okay. We have a motion in a second on item 616. All those in support of this motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. This motion passes, this item passes, six to zero. Okay, that concludes our consent agenda. Thank you very much for the presentation, the input, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
So first item on our regular agenda tonight is item 7.1. This is a second reading, reading of the ordinance that would take care of our redistricting, which is a once-in-ten-year event. It would approve the redistricting of single-member city council district and establish new single-member district boundary lines for city council elections based on the 2020 census data. Do I have a motion for approval?
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Rather, I should have asked, do we have a motion? Anyway, thank you for your motion and your second. Counsel, any discussion on this item? We've discussed this at length prior to this meeting. Mr. Griffith? Just want to verify for citizens that this is the illustrative plan two, just as we voted on last week. No changes. This is exactly what we did last week, previous meeting. Correct? That is correct. Okay. I think I fully support this, and I appreciate everybody's work on this. And one thing that, to quote Ms. Joy, "It is a cleaner map." But I think it's the right thing to do, and I think it'll help us, again, not just next year, but I think this will be very beneficial five, six, eight years from now, for this whole coming decade. So I'm ready to go forward with this. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anything else? I concur with Mr. Griffith. I was proud of the work that the council did on this. It's, when you're, when you're looking at changing demographics and you're trying to maintain the character of your district, it's not easy. But I think we found as balanced a plan as we could come up with for, you know, the next 10 years, and the council that's around in 31 can do the next one. Is that going to be you? All right. We have a motion in a second on item 7.1. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. This motion passes six to zero. Okay. Next up is another second reading. This is from Engineering. We got briefed on this last week. I believe we have Mr. Keenum here to, again, give us some brief information on it and consider it a second time. Mr. Keenum?
Thank you again, Mayor Protim, counsel. Yes, this is the second read. We presented it last week. I don't have a formal presentation for you, but you have a revised ordinance in front of you, I believe, excuse me, I believe. And there's a few modifications. One of them is to strike the comment that I mentioned to y'all last time on page 15. We removed that reference. And also, there was some editorial changes made by LPNL to help clarify some statements. And then there was a couple of substantial changes that they made, point out to you on page, so the clarification statements are on page 6, 8, and 21 of what you have at your dais. And then pages 13 and 18 had some substantiative changes. And one on page 13, which adds to section 3701034, really adds language to anybody doing work with the utilities and the overhead has to have a pole attachment agreement with LPNL first. So that's a clarifying statement that, that they wanted added, and I think that's appropriate as well. And then page 18, basically, this is on the vegetation part in section 3701043G. If vegetation, we talked about replacing vegetation in the right of way if they tear it up. We've added a statement that if it interferes with the overhead electric utility for safety purposes, that, that does not have to be replaced. That overhead vegetation that would interfere with the electrical lines does not have to be replaced in that regard. So, and we do have some members of LPNL here, if you have further questions for them or for myself. And those are the only changes that we, we have prior to what we talked about last week.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Keenum. Any questions for Mr. Keenum? Okay. Oh, you have a question, Randy?
I would just like, Mr. Keenum, to kind of refresh us of why this was, why this is such an important document and, and why it was the, how it will help us to mitigate and also police some of the problems that we've been having in regards to subcontractors and contractors with, that are doing work within our city.
Sure. And so part of what this ordinance does is to tighten up construction schedules. They have to submit construction schedules, and so we know when and where they're going to work, the timeframes of that. We have a perpetual bond that's added to that. And so if there is work that is, doesn't get completed, that we have the ability to go back and cash in on the bond to warranty that or replace stuff that's, that's active. They can't move on to additional properties if they haven't repaired existing damages. So they have to fix damages first before they can move on to additional places in town. Restoration is part of that. We have the ability now to revoke their permit and their license if they're not complying with the standard. And so really, it, it tightens up a lot of things. It makes stuff less ambiguous than what we used to have. And so this helps our, our staff, Diane and Josh, who are behind me, and also kudos to them again for the work they've done, even this week, and pulling everything together again. But they're out there in the field every day, trying to make sure that this is adhered to. And so this really helps them to be able to enforce things if we've got contractors that aren't doing what they're supposed to. The reference checks for new contractors coming in town will really help, hopefully to get more quality people in town that have done this before and that we don't become the guinea pigs for the first time that they've tried to work in the right of way. You know, again, working on private property is not allowed today. There's specific language in this, again, that talks about that. They've got to be in the right of way. This is not for private property. And so we just think this is a tool that's going to help. You guys get lots of complaints. We get lots of complaints. And so we think this is And so we think this is going to help shore a lot of that up. We're going to, you know, we might need to change it again in the future. This is a work in progress. This is really going to help us and help these guys behind me to be able to enforce and really implement the things that we need to do to protect our right of way within the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keenum. Okay. Mr. Griffith, do you have a motion on this?
Yes, Mayor Protem, thank you, I do. I move to amend the proposed ordinance by substituting the original ordinance with the version that has been distributed on the dais. The substituted ordinance makes some minor clarifications to the original and one substantive addition at the request of LPNL. The substantive change is section 37.01.034G has been added requiring permit holders to notify LPNL if they will be lashing or tashing to any city-owned electric utility
Thank you for that substituted motion, Mr. Griffith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Okay, counsel, any questions or discussions on this item?
Mr. Keenum, thank you and you guys behind him there. For doing this, we've had so many problems with it. I was driving down Quaker the other day and they got it barricaded off again and I was just fuming. Guess what? It's a city project. It's a water, they're installing a water sleeve or something of that nature. But they are working every day, so I'm checking on them. So thank you, we really appreciate.
Absolutely.
The neighbors really appreciate it.
And again, the kudos go to Josh and Diane. They're the ones that have done the lion's share of the work.
Mr. Christian, did you have another question? Your mic's on.
Oh, sorry. I apologize.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other comments, questions? All right. We have a motion in a second on item 7.2. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Motion passes six to zero. Okay, counsel, now what we've got, we've got two batches of zoning tonight. We've got some new zone cases, which would be item 73 through item 78. It is important to know that item 73 has been removed by the applicant. So if anyone is here, I'm sorry, I probably should have mentioned this earlier. If you happen to be here for 73, for or against, that item will not be discussed tonight. Okay? I apologize, I meant to do that earlier. I should have let you know. So anyway, item 73 has been withdrawn. Okay, counsel, what we have left is item 74 through 78. Two of those remaining items require a super majority to overturn the decision of P&amp;Z. We do not have the members on the dais tonight for that super majority. So I would, if it's okay with you, we'll get a presentation from Brian and then at your, whatever your pleasure is, we can decide whether or not we have the hearings on those two items. Okay? Mr. Eisen.
All right. Case 2538X is for Derek Cooper and Lee Mazerick, represented by Tyson Rowan. The request is to rezone property from family apartment District A1 to local retail District C2 with specific use for self-storage facility at 6801 Fourth Street. We sent out 26 notifications and received one in favor and one in opposition. The opposition essentially doesn't want retail in the area and is afraid that this might open up Fifth Street to traffic. Here we show the notification map of the two that we received and the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of Fourth Street and east of Quincy Avenue. The subject site is zoned A1 with R1 to the east, south, and west, and a portion of A1 to the direct south and R2 across Fourth Street to the north. The future land use map does call for low-density residential in the area and public, semi-public to the west. Here we have the subject site photos as well as a site plan provided by the applicant and then floor plans of the 16 units being proposed. While the future land use map calls for low-density residential at this location, this lot was recently rezoned to A1. And while the request is not in conformance with the future land use map, it would again provide a buffer between the substation to the west and the existing R1 development to the east. The request should be compatible with surrounding area and uses and should not generate a large increase in traffic as it is along an arterial street. Staff recommended approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by a vote of six to one.
Thank you, Mr. Eisen. Counsel, any questions? Please continue.
Case 3096G for Red Canyon Development LLC, represented tonight by Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is to rezone property from single-family District R1 to reduce setback single-family District R1A-specific use for townhomes at 10601 Chicago Avenue. We sent out 70 notifications and received one in favor and two in opposition. The opposition is essentially concerned with their property values and maintenance of the subject property. Here we have the notification map and the subject site outlined in orange, generally located east of Chicago Avenue and south of 106th Street. Again, the subject site is zoned R1 with R1 to the east, south, west, and north. And the future land use map calls for low-density residential in this area. Here we show the subject site photos of its current state and the proposed 74 lot layout. The future land use map calls for low-density residential at this location and the request for R1A is consistent with that. The request is also in conformance with the zoning ordinances and is appropriate adjacent to existing uses. And the request is compatible with the surrounding area and is located along a collector street. Staff recommended approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Thank you, Brian. Counsel, any questions for staff? Please go on.
Case 3309B is for Lubbock Land Company, represented tonight by AMD Engineering. The request is to rezone property, single-family district, or from single-family District R1-specific use to two-family District R2 at property generally located south of 116th Street and east of Louisville Avenue. We sent out 18 notifications and received one in favor and one in opposition. The opposition is concerned about apartments being constructed at this location. Here we show the notification map with the properties in favor and in opposition. And the subject site outlined in orange, again, generally located south of 116th Street and east of Louisville Avenue. The subject site is currently zoned R1 with specific use with transition to the north, C3 to the east, R1 to the south, and a mix of R1 and R2 to the west. The future land use map calls for low-density residential in the area. Here we have some subject site photos along with a proposed layout for this portion of the subdivision. This one entails 64 lots. While the future land use map calls for low-density residential at this location, the types of uses allowed in R2 can be consistent with the expected level of intensity of the surrounding land uses and is appropriate adjacent to other existing residential uses. It can also serve as a buffer between the commercial to the northeast or the northwest and the existing single-family development. Request is also compatible with the surrounding area and will be located along two local streets with access coming from 118th and 116th Street. Staff recommends approval and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Eisen. No questions? Keep rolling.
Case 3448A is for Fleet Pickup Accessories, S2 Farms and Feed and Firewood, represented by Centerline Engineering and Consulting. The request is to rezone property from transition District T to local retail District C2, specific use for a self-storage facility, and commercial District C4 at 3511 North Frankfurt Avenue. We sent out six notifications and received none in support or in opposition. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of Kent Street and west of Frankfurt Avenue. Again, the subject site is zoned transition with transition zoning surrounding the subject site on all sides. The future land use map calls for low-density residential within the area. And here we have some subject site photos and its surroundings with the proposed layout of the rezoning with C4 adjacent to Frankfurt Avenue and the C2-specific use to the west of the C4 at the rear of the property. The principles outlined in the comprehensive plan designate this area for low-density residential. Commercial uses are not appropriate for this type of designation. However, the neighborhood center concept out of the comprehensive plan may be appropriate adjacent to low-density residential uses. However, the applicant's request for C4 zoning is not in conformance with the overall comprehensive plan and the request for C2-specific use zoning is in moderate conformance with the overall comprehensive plan. The proposed C4 zoning is not compatible with the surrounding area and could change the character of the existing development. However, the proposed C2-specific use zoning request is compatible with the surrounding area and may not change the character of the existing development. The use of the property is currently non-conforming and the proposed rezoning is located along Frankfurt Avenue, which is a principal arterial. Planning staff recommended approval of the request for C2 and denial of the request for C4. And the Planning and Zoning Commission essentially voted along those same lines recommending approval of the request for C2 and denial of the request for C4. And there are two separate ordinances in your backup for this case because there's two separate requests.
Thank you, Mr. Eisen. Questions for staff?
Keep going. Case 3453 is for Sita Lopez. The request is to rezone property from transition District T to local retail District C2 with a specific use for an event center at 5525 122nd Street. We sent out six notifications and received none in opposition and none in support. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of 122nd Street and west of Chicago Avenue. Again, the subject site is zoned transition with properties zoned R2 across 122nd Street to the north. And property zoned transition surrounding the subject site, there's also a mix of property that's not within the city limits. In this map, it's what's denoted in purple, is not within the city limits. Future land use map calls for low-density residential within the area. And here we have some subject site photos and the surrounding and a photo of their entrance gate, I believe, to the property next door to them, provided by the applicant. The principles outlined in the comprehensive plan designates this area for low-density residential. Commercial uses are not appropriate for this type of designation, especially one with lots, one lot with residential surrounding this property. So the request is not in conformance with the overall comprehensive plan. The proposed request is not compatible with the surrounding area and could change the characteristics of the existing development. With that, staff recommended denial of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial by a vote of zero to seven.
Thank you, Mr. Eisen. Counsel, any questions on this for staff? Okay. So what we've got now, thank you, Brian. We've heard presentation, first of all, 73 was withdrawn. We've heard presentation on 74, 75, 76. 77 and 78 were the special situation regarding the super majority. Legal counsel has reminded me, we have posted the hearings. Counsel, if it's your pleasure, we'll open up for the hearings and then hear those in favor and those opposed to these cases and then make a decision on the two that have special circumstance and go for that. Is that good? Okay. So with that, I'll open the hearing on items 74, 75, 76, 77, and 78. If you're wishing to speak on any of these zone cases or whether you're for them or against them, this is your opportunity to come speak. Please identify yourself when you come up and which case you're speaking on. Anyone supportive or opposed? Mr. Holman?
Thank you, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates. We're at 1601 Avenue N. I'm representing Red Canyon Development. It's item 7.5, case 3096. Brian, do, can we get to that layout? I never know which way to go on this. Maybe the lot layout's probably good enough. Very good. Technically challenged. This is the, sort of the second stage of our last phase of development in this Abiglen development. This is just northwest of 114th and Slide Road. We've been blowing and going on three phases of single-family between our location and Slide Road over to the east. This is sort of the last piece of the puzzle for us. As you can tell, we are next to Chicago Avenue. That is a collector-level street and we felt like that might be a candidate location for townhome-style development and hence the application. I did reach out, I left a voice message with the two that had turned in letters of opposition. Did not hear anything back. I was, and I found out today of two people who had called in with questions. I was able to speak to one of them. He was just not understanding the development process, had no issue about the zoning. He was concerned about Chicago Avenue. And so when I was able to explain to him that, well, yeah, through the development process, we get the pleasure of paying for widening that, I think that eased his fears. So I think we've done our due diligence on it. There was a concern about property values. I believe it's safe to say that what we intend to build in this phase will likely, at least at the tax appraisal office, register a slightly higher dollar value than what's to the west of us. So I'm confident that we would not have any adverse impact on property values. To me, it's a logical fit. As I said, it's the last phase of our Abiglen development. There is one point of detail I would like to just sort of get on the record. I found just today what I think is nothing more than a little Scrivener's error in the zoning ordinance. It talks about what the zoning reverts back to should the 30 months lapse and we don't get a building permit. It speak, it just says R1. We actually have an existing R1-specific use underlying and I would just ask the staff make that adjustment for a second reading. So with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holman. Don't go far.
Thank you.
We may call you back. Okay. Anybody else speaking in favor or in opposition of any of these cases? Please identify yourself.
Hello, my name's Weston McCowen. I'm with AMD Engineering, located at 6515 68th Street. I'm here on behalf of item 7.6. Mr. Eisen covered all the details of our request very well. It's requesting R2 from R1. I know that he mentioned the people that were in opposition were afraid it was going to be apartments. The developer, Andy Bean, is here. He spoke with one family in opposition and made sure they knew it was townhomes. And then we actually spoke with a family that came at P&amp;Z and had a good discussion with them. But this will be built, owned, and managed and up-kept by Lubbock Land. So we think it's going to be a very nice development. If y'all have any questions for me, I can answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McCowen. We may, we may need you again. Thank you very much. Okay. Good evening, sir.
Justin Cantwell with Centerline Engineering and Consulting, 8312 Upland Avenue, here for case, for item number 7.7. We're in disagreement with the planning department on this particular site. What we're trying to do is get into conformance, as he said, we are out of conformance right now. And to be able to- now, and to be able to expand services if we choose to in that location for that C4 zoning. Everything along that stretch of road from Kent to Ursulon, if you look on that side of the highway, out of every, everything along that west side, there is 13 commercial businesses and 11 residents within that mile stretch. Okay? Our closest residence is about 200 foot to the south of us, which is a trailer house over there. The two buildings, the two commercial tracks that are to the north of us, which are also transitional right now, if you go by what they are currently doing in those businesses, they should be, they should be a C4 zoning as well. And being a principal arterial, typically those hard corners can be reserved for commercial. Yes, we are seeking C4, but with what we're currently doing, that C4 is what makes sense in order for us to get conforming. I want to bring your remembrance to a first reading case that happened last week that is number seven, or is number 7.10 tonight, of the C4 that was voted in five to two in the previous meeting, that is completely surrounded by residential except for on one side, which is C3. And we don't have anything around us besides a couple of trailer houses that we're trying to, our best to buffer that by adding that C2 designation. And I just want to keep that in y'all's mind as y'all consider this case. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Cantwell. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
How are you?
Pretty good. How about yourself? I'd like to apologize for the tire, but I had work and couldn't get nobody to take over, so we got it. My name's Mike Swartzkoff. I live at 6301 FM 2641, Shallowwater, Texas. I'm the principal owner of the four acres we have here in discussion.
What item is it, sir?
The what?
Which item?
77, excuse me, yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, we're looking at getting it rezoned. We've got a gentleman that wants to buy the property and a course. Y'all know, about three years ago, we ran X10, and everything reverts back to an R1 transitional, which I've talked to a lot of people down there, and nobody was told that that's what was going to happen after we were brought in. So nobody really knows. And I'm basically the second person in that whole line that's fixing to try to sell the property. There was one other one that was sold that went from a restaurant back to a restaurant, which was the shack. The gentleman that is doing this, he basically is a rental outfit. He does, to be honest with you, a lot of people don't like to hear it and everything, but he deals in roll-off dumpsters and porta-potties, which, coming in today, there's 13 porta-potties down here and seven roll-off dumpsters, which basically most of all his equipment is going to be gone. But he needs a C4 in order to have his equipment outside, because we don't have any buildings large enough, you know, to where he can do the maintenance and everything. Basically, he doesn't rent from outside, they rent from an office, and all their stuff is, he's mainly in with the oil field. He does more out in the oil field. They've got cool-down trailers where they go out there for safety for people, and of course, the porta-potties, all these places have regulations on them stating that they have to have, just like job sites over here, they've got porta-potties, and then the contractors have got roll-off dumpsters, which are basically trash dumpsters. And you can see it all over Lubbock, wherever there's any type of new construction, you see a roll-off dumpster, and a lot of places you see a porta-potty. But what we're trying to do is get it rezoned. We've already got him under contract, under the stipulation that we get it zoned, C4. He tried once before when we first talked about it, and I think they didn't see eye-to-eye down there, so he put the monkey on my back. It's my property. We've already got everything. Centerline's already worked up the plat to get it platted and stuff, but what we're trying to do is just get it to a C4 so he can basically rent the equipment to all these job sites all over. And he's got places in Midland, Odessa, and that kind of stuff, but his area that he's in right now is too small, but that's why we're doing it. I mean, we're talking 1.87 acres, the center part of it. They're going to plan on putting a metal fence around that matches the buildings and stuff in the back, but that's why we were trying to get the C2 buffer in there, because we've also got a sign over there, which should be technically in an M1, but their grandfather did, a Lamar sign over on the south side. But that buffer zone in there should be adequate. And then if you look at the plans, we were looking, and I've got a real sneaky suspicion, that's where the city's going to want to put a road all the way from Frankfurt all the way to Milwaukee, because it's at the end of four, two properties here, and I believe four or five on the north side, so that would make a good road, which would add another buffer to it. But everything out in that area that's brought in to the south of us, C4, there's a guy with, truck driver, you know, he's got, he keeps rock on his lot, he's got four semis that work out of there, and that kind of stuff, which basically, you know, Lee's been doing that for years and years, you know? But all we're asking is trying to get it zoned to a C4. We're not talking about a big area. We don't have to worry about him in the future putting in a dance hall or anything like that, because there's not enough area. So I appreciate you guys' time and everything, but that's what we're looking at trying to do.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
Well, we may, we may have questions. Thank you, Mr. Swartzkoff. Anyone else here tonight that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of the 74, 75, 76, 77, or 78? Going once, going twice, okay. All right, then, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, again, we have two that we really don't have enough on the dais to address, and so that's 77 and 78. I would, let's address those two first, if you don't mind. If someone, if it's your pleasure, I would entertain a motion to postpone those two to a date certain, and I would just interject that I know I'm not going to be at the January 11th meeting, so that means it would be January 25th. Because you're going to be in the same situ, I guess I could zoom in, couldn't I? Yeah, so, okay, that's right, I can zoom in. I can do that.
Move to postpone 77.
7 and 78 to January the 11th, regular city council meeting for consideration and a vote.
I've got a motion to postpone to date certain on items 77 and 78. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Christian. Okay, counsel, any discussion on that motion? We've got a motion on the floor to postpone those two items to our meeting, our first meeting in January, January 11th. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to postpone those two items, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, lack sign. That motion passes six to zero. Okay.
Mayor Proton, you might want to explain to those people why we have to postpone.
We have to, to overturn P&amp;Z, we have to have a supermajority vote, which means six to one. And with only six people on the dais tonight, you don't have that opportunity, so we want to have seven people on the dais so that you have an opportunity for the fair vote. So that's why it gets postponed. Unfortunately, that's just the situation we're in tonight. Otherwise, we would hear the cases, but everyone, you know, you want to appeal under the city council, you should get every chance to be able to do so. Okay, counsel, the balance of these new cases is 74, 75, and 76. What's your pleasure on these?
Set up on separate.
I'm sorry. I got you on?
Yeah, I was going to request 74 away from the other two.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. We can handle 74 separately? Is it, you okay if we handle the other two together then? Okay. Item 74 is on page 999 of your agenda. It's a request from Planning, Zone Case 2538X. Do I have a motion on this item?
Move for approval, second.
Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Discussion from counsel? Or questions for staff?
The proponent's not here.
Is the proponent for this case here?
I don't see them. There's a little bit more to this zone case. Brian, can you put up that photo of that, of the surrounding property? Okay, now, can you go over to the actual photos?
There we go.
Right here, okay. This is in my district, and I know it's been a problem because of that utility substation that does not belong to the city of Lubbock, belongs to Excel. And I've had lots of complaints about it because it's ugly, but that doesn't matter. And so the request that's been made is for self-storage specific use, and what I found out was that if the request has, is for 1,500 square feet, call them stalls, and had large overhead doors, which immediately made me think that they were using it for office warehouse, which is not allowed in this district. Have since visited and found out that what they are planning on doing is using it for self-storage, but for RVs, boats, things of that nature. The people who live, let's see. The people who live directly across the street from it are in an R1 neighborhood, and they will be looking at that self-storage facility. However, right now, they're looking at the utility substation. So my question, Brian, on the entrance to this self-storage facility, is the entrance to it from Fourth Street? I think it is. Yeah, there is a plan, some, there it is. And so the main, main and only entrance is from Fourth Street?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
In fact, this, this plan that they show, that southern portion where Fifth Street is, where everybody had the concerns, would end up being a cul-de-sac.
And that's been a problem, because Fifth Street goes out there and it just stops, doesn't go anywhere else. So I had asked the two gentlemen who were there, Derek Cooper and Lee Mazurek, I had asked them to visit with the neighbors to see how they were going to react. I've not heard from anybody, not from the neighbors, and I haven't heard from Derek Cooper and Lee Mazurek. So I don't really know where we are on, on this. It clearly has issues for the people who live across the street from it, but my question, if somebody would show up, is what would you rather look at? What you have now or this facility? I have been assured that it cannot be an office warehouse situation where people run their businesses out of these facilities.
Correct, and we had that conversation with applicants prior to P&amp;Z as well.
That's right. So I'm kind of of the opinion, until I can get somebody in here that we can talk to and we can get them on the record, to postpone this item. So I'm going to move to postpone it to January the 11th at the regular city council meeting.
Okay, I've got a motion.
Hang on, Sheila, I know you're down there, but now we've got a motion on the floor to postpone to date certain January 11th, item 7.4. Do we have a second on this motion?
We don't.
Okay. Motion dies for lack of a second.
I mean, I'll offer a second. I was going to ask something else, but...
You are offering a second?
I'll offer the second.
Okay, we do have a second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on item 7.4 to postpone to date certain. Ms. Patterson-Harris, the floor is yours.
I was going to ask staff if there was anything else that could be...
That's right, we already have a motion.
I second the motion.
We have a...
We should have amended the motion, is that correct? No? Okay.
But we can't talk about anything other than the postponement.
Technically, you're limited to just discussing the propriety of postponing it.
Well, never mind, I'll make myself a note.
Counsel, are there any comments or discussions germane to the postponement of this item?
Just want us to be able to make decisions based upon what's really happening, as opposed to having to guess. There were questions at Planning and Zoning about this item as well.
Okay, counsel, any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to postpone on item 7.4. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, lack sign. That motion passes six to zero. Okay, counsel, I will entertain a motion on items 75 and 76.
Move for approval of items 7.5 and 7.6. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Counsel, discussion related to these two items. 75 is on page 1,022, 76 is on page 1,043. Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve items 75 and 76, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, lack sign. That motion affecting items 75 and 76 passes six to zero. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing to consider an ordinance for a request for de-annexation of an area approximately 14.8 acres inside the southwestern city limits of the city of Lubbock, generally lying between 114th Street and 130th Street, east of the Wolfherth city limits. I believe we have a presentation. We'll hear from staff, and then we'll consider a motion on this item. Mr. Eisen.
So item 7.9, again, is a request for de-annexation of an area of approximately 14.8 acres inside the southwestern city limits of the city of Lubbock. It lies generally between 114th Street and 130th Street, just east of the Wolfherth city limits. It's essentially Malkove Avenue. So in August of 2020, the city of Wolfherth approved an annexation. It actually went over our boundary, city limits that we had already approved in 2008 and 2000, or 1999. So we reached out to Wolfherth, and ultimately, this is the route that the city of Lubbock has chosen to go, is to dis-annex, de-annex this portion of the city of Lubbock, which resulted in it going back to the city of Wolfherth and Lubbock County. And if y'all have any questions, I'm available.
Sounds like a hostile takeover. Thank you, Mr. Eisen. Are there any questions for staff on this de-annexation? Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay. Whoops. So we'll open a hearing on this. I've got a script here. At this time, I will open the public hearing in regards to the de-annexation of an area of approximately 14.8 acres inside the southwestern city limits of the city of Lubbock, generally of an area of approximately 14.8 acres inside the southwestern city limits of the city of Lubbock, generally lying between 114th Street and 130th Street, and east of the Wolfher City Limits. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak against the de-annexation? We'll take all those that are opposed to the annexation for, opposed to the de-annexation. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the de-annexation? Okay. This very long public hearing is now closed. Okay. Is there a motion related to item 7.9?
Move for approval, second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Thank you, Ms. Joy. All right, counsel, is there any discussion on this item for de-annexation?
Mayor Protem, does this mean that they get to build the road? Prochurica.
We lost the city manager.
Wood says yes.
We have, we have nodding from Public Works that says yes.
That was nice, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, counsel, we have a motion and a second to approve item 7.9. All those that are supportive of this motion, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion passes six to zero. Okay. Now, for the second group of zone cases, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 second readings of zone cases that we took up last Tuesday. We'll begin with a brief presentation from staff, and then we'll discuss on how to handle these. Mr. Isom.
All right, case 1893 DD is for Fourth Street Holdings, represented by N'Dugal Realtors. The request is to rezone property from general retail district C3 to commercial district C4 at 6024th Street. Here we have the subject site outline in orange, generally located west of Homestead Avenue and north of Fourth Street. City Council approved first reading of this case by a vote of five to two.
Any questions for staff?
Keep rolling.
Case 2538 AA is a request for Beaton Bow Homes. It's a request to rezone property from single-family district R1 to reduce setback single-family district R1A at 7111 26th Street. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located south of 26th Street and east of Upland Avenue. City Council approved first reading of this case by a vote of seven to zero. Case 2538Z is for MCP Enterprises LLC, represented by AMD Engineering. It's a request to rezone property from single-family district R1 to general retail district C3 at 7112, 7118, and 7120 19th Street. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located north of 19th Street and east of Upland Avenue. City Council approved first reading of this case by a vote of seven to zero. Case 2556D is for Raymond Dale and Nanette Peckel. This is a request to rezone property from garden office GO to two-family district R2 at 2516 81st Street. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located west of University Avenue and north of 81st Street. City Council approved first reading of this case by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Please continue.
Case 3132A is for Harvest Church Lubbock, represented by R2 Engineering. The request is to rezone property from high-density apartment district A2 to reduce setback single-family district R1A with a specific use for garden homes. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located south of 58th Street and east of Wassau Avenue. City Council approved first reading of this case by a vote of seven to zero.
Keep rolling.
Case 3449 for Tooten Totem, represented by OJD Engineering. The request is to rezone property from transition district T to interstate highway commercial district IHC at 9711 US Highway 87. Here we show the subject site outline in orange, generally located north of 98th Street and east of US Highway 87. City Council approved first reading of this case by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Brian. Counsel, any questions for staff? Please continue.
Case 3451 is for NWP EV5 Project LLC, represented by Hugo Reeden Associates. This is a request to rezone property from single-family district R1 to family district R2, family apartment district A1, high-density apartment district A2, and local apartment district, sorry, and local retail district C2 to reduce setback single-family district R1A, high-density apartment district A2, local retail district C2, and general retail district C3. Here we have the subject site outline in orange, generally located east of Slide Road and south of Ursulent Street. City Council approved first reading of this case by a vote of seven to zero. Case 3452 is for Red Canyon Development, represented today by Hugo Reeden Associates. This is a request to rezone property from single-family district R1, specific use, transition district T, high-density apartment district A2, and garden office GO to local retail district C2 and general retail district C3 at 11202 Indiana. Here we have the subject site outline in orange, generally located north of 114th Street and west of Indiana Avenue. City Council approved first reading of this case by a vote of seven to zero.
Please continue.
Case 3452A is again for Red Canyon Development, represented again by Hugo Reeden Associates. The request is for a specific use for an event center on properties only of local retail district C2 at 11202 Indiana Avenue. Subject site is outlined in orange, again, generally located north of 114th Street and west of Indiana Avenue. City Council approved first reading of this case by a vote of seven to zero.
Four more.
Final one is case 3454 for Plains Capital Bank, represented by Park Hill. The request is to rezone property from single-family district R1, specific use, to local retail district C2 at 5014 University Avenue. Here we have the subject site outline in orange, generally located west of University Avenue and south of 50th Street. City Council approved first reading of this case by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, counsel, we have a number of second reads here. Give me some input on how you want to handle these.
We need 710 separately?
Okay. I've got, I've got a call for pulling 710, anything else? So, counsel, I'll take that you're good to consider 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 collectively? I would entertain a motion to approve those at this time.
Second, Mayor Protem. Move to approve, 711 through 719.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Thank you for the second, Mr. Chaddis. Further discussion on these items, counsel? All right, hearing no discussion, please indicate your support of the motion to approve by saying aye. Opposed by like sign. Motion passes six to zero. That approves 711, 712, 713, 714, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. Okay. Let's go back to item 710, yeah, 710. And I will entertain a motion on this item.
Move for approval, second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Thank you, Mr. Christian. Okay, counsel, discussion or questions for staff on item 710?
Mayor Protem, I wish the gentleman from Centerline was still here because he was exactly correct. On the item 7...
7.
That gentleman was told at Planning and zoning that they would never zone a C4 next to an R1. And that's exactly what this proposes to do, to take, put a C4 in the middle of R1. And we had this discussion at the last council meeting. This is proposed to be a kennel, I guess for lack of a better word, long-term kennel sometimes, to the north is residential. There are duplexes that back up to this property. There are single-family homes actually face the back of this property. And yes, there's a golf course. Shadow Hills is also back there. But to the west are all of the people who live in that housing development, who are retired or disabled. And there's a C, I believe it's C2, is that right, Brian? The Strip Center?
Just to the east.
That was built recently, has one business in it. And then across Fourth Street is all residential. So, I still don't believe this is the proper place. I think there is a proper place, but it is not this place. Someone made a statement about the apartments. Well, the apartments are further to the east. And yes, apartment people have dogs, but they also can't let them disrupt anybody who lives nearby, or they won't be living there very long. So, I am concerned that the people who live around this facility will be disturbed. I did hear at the last meeting that the animals, and it's not just dogs, it's also cats, come out at different times, but between 2:00, 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM was what I was told by Mr. Quisenberry the other night, for sure. And I think there are some other times, but those were the times that they would, would be coming out. So, I cannot support it. It is in my district, and I do think that there is way too much residential. And if Planning and zoning passed it, then they didn't follow what they, they told the gentleman on 77, who had a whole lot less residential around his property. And he was asking for C4, and that's what's being asked for here. So, I think we should reconsider this one. I don't think that's the only piece of property available for this facility. The existing facility that Mr. Quisenberry has is in South, but it is set off of, off of Indiana, and it is not close to any residential. And it's probably in the right spot, but I don't believe that this one is. So, I'm opposed to this zone change. And if Mr. Quisenberry decides, for whatever reason, he's not going to build what he's telling us, then it opens us up to a lot of C4 uses that are certainly not appropriate around this R1.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate my comments from last week, and actually happens to be my comment anytime there's a C4 around a residence, that I'm not in approval for it. I get concerned when C4s are this close to residential areas. Having dealt with a lot of complaints about specific things like this in, within District 2, I have always maintained that stance. So, I don't know what P&amp;Z told the gentleman, but I know what I always say. So, I just wanted to reiterate that I am still at the same position as the last council meeting when this came before us.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Counsel, any other discussion or comments on item 710? Mr. Griffith?
I'd like to get Mr. Quisenberry to come up, if you don't mind, please.
Good evening, Mr. Quisenberry.
Thank you, counsel. How are you? Good. Stephen Quisenberry, 4413 89th Street. Thank you for coming up. Thanks for being here. Ms. Joy asked a really good question that I'd like for you to address. Are your full intent, are you going to build this facility? If you have, if, if this gets zoned tonight, are you going to build this facility? Yes, sir, absolutely. You're not, you don't have another plan or another option? No, sir. We are going to build the facility, yes, sir. Okay. That's, I just wanted you to tell us that, if that's the case. I appreciate that. Take your word. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Anything else on this one, counsel? Okay, counsel, we have a motion and a second to approve on item 710. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, like sign. Motion passes four to two. Last item on our agendas tonight is item 720. It is on page 1,322. It is a resolution from Planning to authorizing the mayor to execute an annexation agreement. We're going to start with a presentation from staff. Mr. Isom, it seems to be your show tonight.
Not always by choice. So, this is a proposed, you have an annexation agreement that's been placed in front of you. This would be the project that Mr. Payne talked about during citizen comments. This is an annexation of approximately 987 acres with a very long list of ownership with the, I can read all the names that I have, Donald Maka, Raynard Maka, Felicia Maka-Filium, Melvin Maka, Joseph Maka, Marie Elizabeth Maka, as trustee of the Marie Elizabeth Maka Trust, Maka Holdings LLC and Phailis and Properties. This area of land is generally located in the southeastern city, or adjacent to the southeastern city limits of the city of Lubbock, south of 146th Street and east of Avenue B. And if you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Any questions for staff on this? Okay, thank you, Mr. Isom. Okay, counsel, we've heard from staff, is there a motion to begin discussion on this item?
Move to approve, second.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Thank you, Mr. Chaddis. Counsel, any questions or comments on this item?
Mayor Protem, this is an area that is in the Lubbock-Cooper School District and is beginning to develop pretty quickly. I think we're going to see a lot of new development, and I think it's, it's some development that's going to happen. Mr. Holman, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It's not where he bought a, somebody brought this in and then they're just going to sit on it. It's, it's a plan. It's got a plan, and it's obviously not going to happen this year and next year, but over probably a three-year period. And so, we just keep growing. I don't know if it will ever stop, and I don't know that we want it to stop. But this is one that I think we need to do, and it will also enable some other tracks to come in as well. So, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Joy is absolutely correct. If you don't spend any time in this part of our community, you should drive out there because it changes on a daily basis right now. It is exciting, and I hope it continues to grow. Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Motion is for approval of item 7 point...